Madam Clerk.
In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session regular meeting for the Franklin Township Council was made by the posting on the bulletin board in the municipal building and township website electronically transmitted to the officially designated newspapers indicating that this work session regular meeting would take place in the municipal building council chambers at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, September 20, 2022.
Thank you. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by an invocation by Councilman Charles Oniakiaka.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Oh God, the Creator and the Redeemer of all the faithful, hear our supplications and through thy infinite love and mercy graciously grant us the strength and power in our thoughts and decisions to be for the benefit of all people at all time. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Here.
Councilwoman Francois. Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Councilman Oniakiaka.
Yeah.
Councilmember Potasnik. Deputy Mayor Pruitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Udine.
Here.
Councilman Vasanella.
Hmm.
Councilman Wright.
Next item is item five on the agenda. There are copies of the agenda there, copies of ordinances that are planned to be discussed tonight. Commendations and proclamations. Michael McDonough, ROI New Jersey Influencer 2022, commendation, Councilman Embarrasson.
I will know what to mean. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. It gives me great pleasure to invite a special guest to our town today, President McDonough of Rattleton Valley Community College. The institution is a great one in Somerset County. It's a growing institution in terms of registrations, associate degree programs, and more importantly, workforce training programs. I believe he had this great vision of building a workforce training center in the campus, and he accomplished that since he became the president. It's a 47,000-square-foot workforce training center that has a number of training programs, starting from automotive technology, advanced manufacturing, cosmetology, aesthetics, environmental control, technology, and commercial energy management, all under one roof. And I don't believe any other community college in the state of New Jersey that much comprehensive program offerings at a community college. So hands off to him. We have a long relationship prior to my council job. I used to work in the community college system, and I have known President McDonough for about eight years prior to coming here. And my wife went to RVCC as a nursing graduate, and she's a nurse, a great school. And every year, New Jersey, there's a magazine called ROI, Returnal Investment New Jersey. The magazine ranks the colleges and the college presidents throughout the state of New Jersey. There are about 73 or so higher education institutions. And this year, Dr. President McDonough made it to the top 25 in the list. So I thought it'd be appropriate to invite him to our council and honor him. Some of you may have heard me speak about our upcoming relationship. We are trying to create a RVCC center in town for the people of Franklin, and he has been very instrumental in driving that process forward with the county commissioners and, of course, with our township manager and our council. So we that's we are we have picked out a location on Hamilton Street, the old historic Tulip House location is where we are targeting to make the RVCC center. That's going to help a lot of our students who just cannot travel to Branchburg, where the main campus is. So as a result, they don't go to college or they go somewhere else. So we wanted to create that opportunity for our graduating high school students and adults who want to get a college degree. And we will slowly bring more workforce training programs as well in that location. Anyway, I'm happy to present this commendation, President McDonough, if you would. The commendation reads, whereas each year ROI New Jersey lists the presidents, deans, and directors who have the greatest influence and impact at their schools and within the business community. And whereas Michael McDonough, Rattleton Valley Community College president, was named one of the top 25 ROI Influencers Higher Education 2022, and whereas Rattleton Valley continually is ranked as a top community college in New Jersey and around the country as a result of Michael McDonough being named the president in June 2014. Now, therefore, we, Ramon Embarrasson, Councilman, and Philip Kramer, Mayor, on behalf of the Franklin Township Council congratulate Michael McDonough on receiving the honor of Top 25 ROI Influencer Higher Education 2022. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. That was from all of council. We are now on to item number six, public discussion. Do you have a motion to open to the public?
Second.
Who would in second? If all in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
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 Close, say nay. Motion is carried. We are open to the public. As you can see, we have a new timer. Just be advised, we can't see that timer. Next week, we will be able to. Get your name and address. We're limited to five minutes. No yielding of time. May only speak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and other guests. This is Pence. My name is Shirley Tallman, and I live at 57 Tallman Lane, which is in, of course, Canal Walk. And I just wanted to make a correction to something I said the last time. I know, Mayor, that you'll certainly understand this one, being a physician. I said that I referred to the fact that I'm losing weight over the stress of the warehouses. And I said that my trousers were falling. Well, I exaggerated. They weren't falling, they were slipping. But today, they're falling. Okay? So I just want to straighten the record out. The other thing I want to say, on a more serious note, although that is serious, I'd like to say that I found myself in a predicament that I haven't been in since I stopped driving for General Motors on the proving grounds in Milford, Michigan. I almost lost control of one of the cars, and I was quite young then. But I've learned a lot more about driving these days, and I do know how to react. Thank God for that training, because an 18-wheeler forced me off the road, literally forced me off the road, as I was trying to, excuse me, as I was trying to turn off of Canal Road to come home. And it was clear, because the 18-wheeler was coming down an incline, a slight incline, which is part of that road, that he wasn't able to stop as quickly as he would have liked to. But you've heard this before. I'm not the first one. There were other people who were up at this mic and have reported that to you. I believe that the, I have a relatively new car, and there is damage to the bottom of my grill on my car. It's a large grill, and the grill is low. I don't know what hit it. I don't know. I didn't hit the rail, but I never had the damage before the incident, so I'm not sure if something, I kicked something up or what happened. But that isn't the most important thing. The most important thing is that it shook the hell out of me. Now, I was at the Safety Commission meeting, I think it was last week, and I did hear promises, commitments, that we would have more patrol cars on the road, which is a good thing, because we do need them. I don't know, Mayor and Council. I know Mr. Warren Locker heard this, because he was present when I stated it, that I called the police, as he advised us to do on a number of occasions, when we hear either trucks that shouldn't be on Metlers or on Weston. Okay, we should call the police and report it, and also call the county commission or the county, because the scenic corridor, as you go toward the park, Colonial, our beautiful Colonial Park, is a county road, is it not? Or am I wrong on that?
No, it's not a county road.
Okay.
And the county commissioners would have nothing at all to do with motor vehicle enforcement.
The county. I'm talking about the county. So if I'm a little confused.
The county would have nothing to do.
Straighten me out on that one, if I'm a little confused.
I'm telling you.
Because who the heck am I going to call? Ghostbusters?
You call the Township Police Department, who's responsible for enforcement of motor vehicle laws in the Township of Franklin.
And I did, and they were overburdened. They were overburdened. And I felt bad for the woman who was in charge on that shift. And I told her that I would personally bring it up in a council meeting to help her. And at that Safety Commission meeting, the young woman who was in charge of the police department did make a commitment that they would be recruiting more officers and adding them. And I'm going to tell you that another reason why that is so important is because when I was, when I had that incident that I just related, where I thought I was going to be pushed into the guardrail, I was coming back from my volunteer work at Parker at Stonegate in Hillsborough. I've been volunteering for that organization for years. And I leave in the morning around 9:00. And here's another kicker. I was shocked, because normally I'm not called in on a Tuesday, but they were shorthanded. And I finished that, or am I?
You can finish your.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And as I was leaving and going down Randolph to make my right onto Canal and get on to 287 South, the cars that came speeding out of Amazon without mufflers, literally speeding like bees out of a hive, because the shift was ending. That was my first experience of that. Evidently, okay, I'll get to it. But what I'm saying, the point is, we need traffic control. We need officers on Randolph. And my councilwoman, I don't think she's here tonight, is she? Or is she behind that mask? There she is. Yeah. Thank you.
Your time is, your time is up.
Okay. But you get my point, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any council have a response?
Good evening. Ronald Schmidt, 134 Hickory Road, Somerset. I have a question that hopefully will be answered during your discussion later on, and then some comments. First, what is the policy, if there is one, about council members meeting with developers or property owners in a private discussion to discuss potential zoning or land use changes that would financially benefit the developer and/or the property owner? On a separate but likely related note, on September 16th, The Franklin Advocate reported, quote, "The owner of Rutgers Plaza on Eastern Avenue will have an informal discussion with the planning board on October 12th to discuss its plan to convert the former Kmart building into a 200-unit apartment complex," end quote. It further states that among the topic of discussion will be changing the zoning to allow residential in this otherwise general business zone, which does not allow residential. Council people meeting privately with a wealthy property owner, which is also reportedly scheduled, and the planning board having a special meeting with the same private entity? Not a pretty picture. Trying to understand the process. Can anyone who wants to lobby for a zoning change get special meetings like these, or just large, big bucks corporations with politically connected attorneys? Based on comments on social media sites such as Facebook, the residents of Historic Franklin and Nextdoor, it's nearly unanimous that the people of Franklin, especially the 5th Ward, already the most densely populated ward in Franklin, do not want residential on the Kmart site. We also don't want a decision to be made that will set a precedent that allows every Tom, Dick, and Sally developer to ask for the same treatment that could result in getting their properties rezoned to allow residential complexes throughout Franklin, where there are now strip malls and shopping centers. We certainly don't need more lawsuits, lawsuits by owners who don't get the same informal meetings with the planning board and council members to discuss rezoning. The Wall Street Journal recently reported that e-commerce needs real store locations now more than ever, and that retailers are opening more stores than they closed for the first time since 2017. The Kmart shopping center owner needs to live up to their own website's hype that states they, quote, "consistently rank among the nation's leading retail estate service firms," end quote. It's not our job to bail out a billion-dollar corporation at the expense of our community's quality of life. If you allow this to be built, I believe it will be a forever reminder to the residents of Franklin of who was sitting where you were all sitting when it was built. And as the first domino of the many residential complexes to be built on former, former commercial sites in Franklin. I recommend that we stick to the master plan and build residential where residential is supposed to be, commercial and retail where they are supposed to be. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, I think there's one question that Mr. Schmidt asked that I can answer very easily.
Go ahead.
So the question about an informal review by the planning board, Mr. Schmidt, is not a special favor. It's in fact allowed for, and the planning board shall grant an informal review to any applicant who makes that application to the planning board for an informal review of a concept plan for development. It's ordinance 112-250, if you'd like to review it.
Okay. Deana Lux, 51 Patriots Way, Somerset. I want to thank you again, Council, for passing the ordinance regarding warehouse development in residential areas and tonnage allowed on the streets surrounding Canal Walk. In addition to warehouse development, I am also concerned in general about developers who are looking for zoning changes to suit their needs. While I realize that they are allowed to ask for changes to zoning to construct what they would like, I am asking you to adhere to your new zoning ordinance regarding a proposed warehouse at the corner of Metlers and Weston Canal Roads and to, I mean, I'm sorry, Weston Road, and to your master plan regarding the Kmart Plaza. Last year, the council was going to have their attorney go before the zoning board to oppose the changes on the council's behalf to the Kmart Plaza and to the change in zoning. Instead, we find out that the developer has asked the planning board for an informal meeting to discuss the project. I'm curious to know whose idea this was to go before, to have this informal meeting before the planning board. However, to bypass the zoning board to convince the planning board members that this project is a good idea, does there need to be a quorum at a, an informal planning board meeting? And if so, is it then still informal? Can the public be there and ask questions? I certainly hope that there is transparency with this project and that the council listens to the residents. For listening to the Ward Two residents, please ask for input from Ward Five residents before they have a high-density apartment house constructed in their neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to repeat again, because I think now it's important that I just read the ordinance, so that we're all on the same page as to what exactly will happen at the planning board meeting and what has been requested. 112-250, informal review. At the request of the developer, the planning board shall grant an informal review of a concept plan for development for which the developer intends to prepare and submit an application for development. The amount of any fees for such informal review shall be a credit towards fees for review of the application for development. The developer shall not be bound by any concept plan for which review is requested, and the planning board shall not be bound by any review. Public notice and notice to owners of all real property within 200 feet shall be given in accordance with Township Ordinance 112-231. Applications by corporations and partnerships shall comply with the disclosure requirement of NJSA 4055D-48.1 through 4055D-48.4. I can tell you that the, the impetus behind this request to make a, an informal presentation to the planning board was made by the applicant's attorney and was not with any input from the township as to that request for an informal review. And the ordinance clearly states that the planning board shall grant that request. And that's how it came to be.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question, clarification.
Yes, sir.
Did I hear in the beginning of that, that there, that you're allowed to do that if you plan on presenting the proposal, an actual application, in this case, for a 200-unit apartment complex, you get the informal hearing first?
What I'm saying to you is what the ordinance says, Councilman. I'm not saying anything.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I heard it right, that if they plan on.
What it says is, the developer intends to prepare and submit an application for development. So there is a concept plan that they wish to present in an informal review to the planning board. I'm not quite sure where or how someone knows why or what they anticipate getting out of that planning board review, because no one, to my knowledge, has had any discussions with them about their plans for an informal presentation to the planning board. So I heard that someone feels that that's some, in some way, attempting to get something. There might be speculation. I don't know what Mr. Bowman reported in the Franklin Report.
I'm not speaking, Mr. Bowman. I just wanted to make sure I heard it right. So then, there's rumor going around that they're also going to shop a commercial idea. And I know there's some people, I think a lot of people are interested to hear about commercial ideas for property. But since this says a 200-unit apartment complex, my, I would assume then, there's no commercial aspects that they're looking to do, according to this. So they get the informal hearing, and then they submit their plan for the apartment complex. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understand the chain of events.
Still in public session. It absolutely would be done in public. That's an interesting question as to whether they need a quorum for an informal.
There's no decision being made by the planning board, so I don't know that they would have to have a quorum, but certainly it's a public meeting. So therefore, they would have to have a public portion to that meeting, and therefore, anyone who wished to make public comment would have the opportunity to do that.
Next, please.
Hello. Kiki Anastaskos, 3204 Enclave Circle in Canal Walk. I would like to follow up where my predecessor, my, the previous speaker left off, in opposition to the warehouses proposed on Metlers and Schoolhouse, as well as the proposed, the proposed or planned high-density apartment complex in the old Kmart site. For those of us who live in Franklin Township, quality of life is extremely important, as is for any, any person. And I think today's, tonight's theme might as well be traffic. Okay? The increase in the sheer volume of traffic in Franklin Township as a result of a, the warehouses being approved and being built, but also proposals such as high-density apartment complexes. There is, I believe, a difference between smart growth and haphazard growth. And smart growth, in my view, is when the, the government planning officials take a long-term view of economic growth and all the trade-offs associated with that economic growth. There's no doubt that every township must grow economically, must provide jobs. But there is always a trade-off, an environmental trade-off, a quality of life trade-off. And I'm beginning to think, with all due respect, that the growth path that we have, have started in Franklin Township is more haphazard than it is planned and deliberate. And I say that, and I would like to ask the council, because I honestly don't know when and whether there has been a comprehensive traffic, traffic safety report for the township. If there has been one, where can I get a copy? We can get a copy. Who is responsible? And, and what were the findings? When was the last time it was done?
That would be a question for the planning board, Mayor, not the township council. I don't know what the planning board has done as part of the, the overall circulation element of the master plan is what looks at traffic throughout the township. That was done within the last several years and was done by an outside consultant who was brought in. So it's part of the master plan. You should talk to Mr. Healy about it. That's, that's, that's a function of the planning board and the master plan.
Okay. So as far as the eight members of the council tonight are concerned, you, you don't know when the last comprehensive traffic safety report was, was done?
Like I said, I could look it up on the website right now. It's part of the last review, 2016.
2016.
And there was several, and there were several amendments to it. I believe that it was done three years ago, but don't hold me to it. My memory is.
Okay.
Is not as good as it was when I was 24. And I'm not 24 anymore.
Thank you. Neither am I. So I would like to propose that any further development that results in an extreme increase in traffic, along with the environmental impact, the quality of life impact, et cetera, et cetera, is halted until a current comprehensive traffic safety report is done for this township. That would be the deliberative and the smart way to proceed. Just approving warehouses to be built, considering more apartment buildings to be built, is not the way to go. It's one-sided. It's one-sided. And let me tell you one trade-off, because clearly, by building up, you want to increase the economic base, right? We, I'm, I'm done. One sentence. We are avoiding the traffic by going to nearby townships for food shopping, for dining, for retail shopping. Now, you may want to consider that, because I personally have changed my behavior, my shopping behavior, and I'm sure many other people, residents of Franklin, are doing the same thing. So.
Your time is up.
Economic trade-offs. Thank you.
And ma'am, it was 2021. Kiki, it's 2021. It's on the township website, under the master plan in the planning department called Circulation Element. And I'm looking at the document now, Franklin Township Circulation Element 2021. It was done last year. It was done last year.
Eleanor Ogan, 9 Republic Row, Somerset, New Jersey. This is the third time I'm bringing this situation up, and the reason I'm doing this, I presented it in front of the Safety Board, and three days after I presented this problem up, again, it happened to me, and this time it was with a truck. So I'm going to present what I'm-- read what I presented to the Safety Board, and just imagine now this with a truck. As I am stopped at a red light intersection of Weston Canal Road and Cotton Tail Road, I proceed to go straight as indicated for my lane. However, the left lane, which is indicated as a left-turning lane to go up Cotton Tail, is not used as a turning lane by the cars in that-- the truck that was in that lane. The occupant of the truck proceeded to go straight, cutting me off and all the other cars off. Because this is a narrow road with no shoulder, I am forced to move close to the guardrail and brake suddenly, hoping that the following vehicles do not rear-end me. This is a very scary situation. I have no escape on my right side, because there's no shoulder, and you have the canal. And I know I followed a truck, and this has happened to me five times with cars, and I followed a truck and the cars, and they all pull into Amazon Center. And I think the chief of police said she was going to go talk to the Amazon Center, and my suggestion-- One of the things that bothered me also is I was thinking of getting a cam, dash cam, but I took a picture. I followed this truck as he was stopping at every stop sign, and I took a picture of him at a stop sign, and he had no tags on his truck that I could see. I looked at the picture many times. So there we have, even if a dash cam was there, I wouldn't have a tag to go by for this truck. So we have a bad situation here. People going straight in a turning lane, trying to get to Amazon, either quick to their jobs, or these trucks just don't want to pull over to the right lane for some reason. And the other thing is, maybe, I don't know who's in control, but maybe we should have better signs there to make sure the lanes are identified so that people make the left turn, and like I said, I don't want to get rear-ended, and I don't want to be pushed off into the guardrail for people going straight. And this has happened to me five times with the cars, and just recently on Sunday with a truck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Benjamin Guy, 35, Patton Drive. I just want to be clear about two things. One is October 29th, I've come up in state this multiple times, supposedly have a Chunk of Tree Festival, October 29th, and I think Ms. Franswala updated things that are going on a youth center that'll be also going on that weekend, I mean, in that period of time for the youth at all. So I want to state that. Second portion, I just want to make sure and reiterate, just in case you guys are a little tone deaf to the people that state coming up here on a regular basis, we have a planning board problem. I just want to make sure we're clear about this. And the reason why I'm trying to make sure that it's being stated this way is because the information that we think is getting to the people is not getting to the people. And what I'm asking the township council, not the manager, the township council, to have Mr. Healy and other people come explain stuff from what the planning board view is for the master plan, because what it is is that I think it is not clear to the town what the expectation is from the town, from what you guys are planning, for the town to cooperate with. So I think there's a disconnect here. So in order for this tension to go down, I'm asking the township council to have Mr. Healy come here and reiterate what's going on with the master plan, because it was delayed when it was supposed to be done. That was one thing. Second thing is, we got caught with our pants down with a couple of things, so we have to explain that. It should be done, so that people can get back to normal life, so that they can invent their frustrations, but also understand what's going on with the town. I think that is unfair to the residents, and I'm blaming the actual management of the residents to actually get that done, because we shouldn't be going back and forth with this for three months. This is ridiculous right now. So that is one thing I want to state. Again, for county involvement projects, and this directly to ramming other people that are involved with county other projects and bringing things down here, again, transparency is real critical right now. And I just want to make sure that it's reiterated, because it will hurt you on your progress or what you're trying to accomplish. And again, if we're not being transparent and we're not using this as an example of what transparency doesn't look like, we need to get ahead of certain things. So again, this is something that I'm just voicing and hearing about. And again, there are another transparency problem. Again, things that are going on business here in the town. Again, we need to get better with our communication, finance, business, and everything else. The thing that's concerning to me, and I'm just going to use an example because it came in the mellor, and I just want to make sure I'm asking this question blatantly for the whole township, community solar program, right? Does everybody understand what a community solar program is? All right? So if I ask all you guys about to reiterate what a community solar program is, and you guys endorse on what you're doing, as far as written letters and going out to people, you guys are okay with what just went out? I'm just making sure we're clear. Because again, just from a staffing standpoint and endorsement standpoint, I just want to know representation where we're agreeing to. And again, that is things that I want to make sure that we're being transparent about, we're going across the board, because again, I just want to make sure that other entities that might come in and do programs here are not going to be treated the same way, are going to be treated the same way. Because again, and I will leave it offline, because I had this direct conversation with Ms. Pruitt, again, things are not being treated the same way across the board when we're actually trying to do these things. And when we don't have a direct policy, or we can't file something on the board, and everybody can't go down the line and actually do the same thing, it looks like favoritism. It looks like bias. And I'm just making sure it's clear. And if that's where we're going to take it to, then again, you're going to be a lot of unrest people here, and there's going to be a lot of tension over the next couple of months, and I wouldn't want to do that if I was you doing a timeframe. So again, as an advisement from people, from when we talk in the community, I'm asking the town council to step up and communicate better. That is the only thing I'm asking right now. I'm not saying that you're doing the wrong job or what have you, you're trying to improve stuff, but the communication is terrible, and it needs to be fixed. Thank you.
May I respond too?
Yes.
Okay, so Ben, you and I have been talking for quite some time, and you have brought some ideas to me, and I have gone to meetings with you, supporting those ideas at the county level, at the school board level, multiple times. Now, the one that you are referring to me today, I believe it's for the Raton Valley Community College Center. Is that correct? No, I'm just asking a question. Is that-- What? So the--
That's part, that's--
Okay, no, I just want to address that particular part, because that is a project that came about, that you know very well, my interest in higher education and workforce training. So we have something common there on the workforce training side. So it was something that has been on my mind, and we have discussed this in this forum a few times. Franklin reporter Bowman, he can also vouch that he has covered that story about a year ago, and when we had some planning discussions, we have revealed that in this forum for the whole town multiple times. So I think your accusation of not being transparent, I think it's not accurate, at least in this instance, okay? So I just want to clear that in front of everybody, that is not accurate.
Yes, Ms. Pruitt.
I think, I just want to get clarification. We were talking about planning board and Mark Healy. Are you talking about a special council meeting? Are you talking about a town hall where we go over the master plan and everything in between? Or is it, you know, at our discretion to sort it out?
The master plan, period, just needs to be reviewed with the town, because I think it's fair to the town residents that they understand what's going on.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I'm getting that takeaway. And then the second thing, and ultimately, I'm sure the township manager may or may not discuss it, but yes, I do know what community solar is. I was part of the group that reviewed it with the Board of Public Utility when I was still with the community. Obviously, I had to recuse myself for anything related to Franklin Township, but it's my understanding that the community solar interaction that we're having is through the BPU-approved program. It was pilot two or program year two. But as far as the letter and far as the information that you all received in the mail, I know that has been a concern, because people have called me. People have asked what this is. Is it a scam? And, you know, I would agree that perhaps that was very confusing to the public and ownership of that. Unfortunately, I think there's things that happened in the background that I'm unclear of, so I'm not going to speculate, but I would acknowledge that that came across very confusing based on folks that did reach out to me. But I just wanted to address that, because Mr. Guy did bring this to my attention, as well as other things, so I did want to acknowledge that.
My name is Angelica Granados, and I live in 3307 Jackie Haller Trail in Canal Walk, which is a senior community of about 2,000 people. We're the corner of Schoolhouse Road and Metlers Road. Across the street from us is another community of families with small children of about, maybe around 2,000 also, 2,000 people. On the other side is the new warehouse. On the other side of Metlers and Schoolhouse is the site of a new warehouse that's proposed to be built, and that's what I'd like to talk about, the issues with warehouses so close to residential areas. I spoke about this last week in the safety department program, but most of the people here are not here, except Mr. Von Lacher. So a question that I have is, does the planning board know what this site has? This one is the warehouse, is a spec warehouse. We don't know what the developer's planning to do with regards to firefighting capability, such as water pressure, safety alarms, et cetera. It's also, it is built as a spec, we don't even know what the tenant will be storing in the facility. How can the township protect the residents nearby? There have been several fire, I'm sorry, warehouse fires of note that are troublesome. In 2015, there was a massive fire in North Brunswick, New Jersey. That fire is close to apartment buildings, and one of the apartment buildings caught fire, and the residents were evacuated. Inspection records show that the warehouse that burned to the ground in July of that year in 2015 had a number of unresolved fire safety issues in the weeks leading up to the incident. In 2016, the massive fire in the warehouse in Hillsboro. The fire grew to be helped by 30 fire departments in different towns, and 200 emergency vehicles had to help fight the fire. The major issue firefighters were facing at that time was the water pressure in the site. In 2021, fire broke out at Amazon Warehouse in central New Jersey, and that was caused, according to the papers, it was caused by improper installation of solar panels. With a fire breakout in the monitor that we have seen, our community would be severely impacted. Does the planning board know what is being stored in the warehouse? Will there be safeguards in place should the facility change hands and subsequent different use be applied? What are the safeguards that the township would apply if the project passes and gets built? Will you set limits on the hours of operation, the traffic volume, truck routes, noise levels, lighting, type of warehouse operation, housing of hazardous materials? I urge you to reject this application in the grounds that it would impact negatively the public safety and welfare of the residents. This is your role, I think, is to ensure the safety of the public. Thank you very much.
Jeff Summer, 58, Devonshire Drive. I'm here to actually ask, I did not get a solar letter. I found out about this on social media and, you know, reading through it, I read some, what I would say, salacious allegations about how these things came about. So I'm really here just to get educated on what it's all about. I'm actually interested in it, based on what little I've heard. So if I could get some information on that, and also if you want to speak to what you've done, because as I said the last time I spoke here, I was on a homeowner's board, and one of the things I found out was, no good deed goes unpunished, so.
Learning that.
So.
I think that between Councilwoman Pruitt and I, we can address some of the questions that you just raised. So the Board of Public Utilities created a program that Councilwoman Pruitt, in her previous career at the Board of Public Utilities, had quite a bit to do with, so I'll let her talk about that part. What I'll talk about just briefly is that Eversolar, which is the company that is currently soliciting Franklin Township for participants in this community solar program, was, made presentations to the township's Public Works Committee probably a year and a half, two years ago at this point, and we met with them. They made application to the Board of Public Utilities to become an approved provider for this program. They were approved by the Board of Public Utilities, and in fact, they are constructing solar arrays in Franklin Township that would be part of this program that residents of Franklin Township could benefit from, and so, Councilwoman, I'll let you take it from there.
And just to clarify, they can benefit, I wouldn't personally have to put a--
No, that's the benefit, that's exactly what it is.
Because I live in a townhome where I can't do that.
There's a solar panel array somewhere--
Yeah.
And it could be, and you know, throughout the state of New Jersey, some are on buildings, some are in fields, some are in wherever, and you benefit.
Taking a step back, community solar, the idea behind it is that it recognizes not everyone has property, roofs, right? There are people in multi-unit dwellings, people who don't own property--
Deed restrictions and--
Deed restrictions. So the idea behind community solar is to provide access, provide equitable access to different folks, right? It's not just for homeowners or the affluent that can afford the installation and the maintenance and all, so. So that's the idea behind community solar. So the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities had two rounds. They did their first year as kind of a pilot year, and then they did pilot year two, and this is, what you're seeing is the result of pilot year two, is that they made solicitations for this program, and different companies provided applications and specs of their project. We can build this many arrays in this area, and we can service this many people in the radius around, right? So some folks, we can do over county lines, some folks we can do within the municipality. But they had to prove the veracity and the legitimacy of their program to the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities, and only at that time they were granted the blessing of the Board of Public Utilities and the credits, right? Because we use, you know, clean energy credits and energy credits. They were allowed the credits to do that work. So Franklin, and again, I just want to say it so I don't get in trouble, I was recused for anything that Franklin on it. It's my understanding Franklin did win a couple of projects. In addition, there are a couple of projects around the municipalities, across county lines, that also can benefit residents. So again, the letters and how they came about, I can't speak to that. It seems like it was very confusing, and that is really unfortunate.
Yeah, I didn't get a letter, that's my fault.
Neither did I, so. But they now, because they have the ability to be a part of the legitimate NJBPU community solar program, now they're trying to solicit participants in it. So they have the array, now they need people to sign up, and that's why you're getting, that's why--
Okay, great.
They're saying, like, you can save this amount of money--
Yeah.
--because we're going to provide you energy that we have gotten through solar energy. So in theory, it's great. It's supposed to be really good.
Yeah, thank you.
It's just unfortunate it has led to a lot of confusion.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah, I too was not pleased with the execution of it. I was given that letter through staff. I knew it was approved by the state. I knew council had--
If you had a time, there. Yeah, no, continue, I'm gone. Yeah, no, continue, I'm gone.
Um, and, um, uh, I thought this was going to, my letter was going to be part of a packet that was going out.
Yeah.
I was taken aback when I saw that the whole ad campaign was my letter, was the letter I signed. They wrote the letter. I reviewed it, made sure it was, it changed some words because they were somewhat misleading. They didn't want me to change the words. I said that I'm not sending out the letter, so they changed the words. But I was, I was, I was not happy with exactly how it was done, but it is a good program.
Yeah.
And it's, 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 you know, I'm very much in favor of renewable energies. Not the worst thing that's I've, that I've ever been involved with, but I wish it had been done better.
Thank you.
And Mr. Summer, and I don't know where you're planning to go, but the question that you asked me before the meeting, I will address in my report.
Okay, great.
So hang out for that and I'll let you know the answer to that.
Well, 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 seem like I'm in another land.
Name and address?
Don H. Stibbs, 25 Parkside, sir. Somerset, New Jersey. I am, uh, seem like I'm, well, I'm not about no solar panels. We don't have no houses. I'm not about some of the things in which the planning board you was talking about because we don't have any interest in the things that the planning board is coming towards, except for I know you have some problems with the planning board because you have some problems with some of the people on the planning board. I'm coming here directly to talk to the people of color that's up there on the stand there. I mean, I'm sorry that Kimberly's not here and I'm sorry that Carl Wright's not here. I'm going to try to address a couple of things, Mayor. Uh, I won't come directly, but I'll be kind of directly, okay? I have a problem in the fourth ward. Y'all killing all the young men, actually killing the young black men. I'm a black activist. I work in the interest of black people and people of color. Abram, God bless you for having your gentleman here with the, uh, but we don't need no Burton Valley College educational. We need a work training program, specifically a work training program in the fourth ward. I understand you, I was coming to you, I've been laid up for a couple of days. But amongst other things, Bob, I'm asking that each one of you guys of color that's on the council, I don't care about the other one, Bob, I mean Jim Bassnell, I know you've always been with us, I need 10 jobs. I need 10 jobs. I'm going to ask the mayor right in front of this whole crowd here, this is what I need bad, to save young black men's lives. I need 10 jobs from the township. I live in here, I'm 80 years old. Thank you very much, miss. And I know what we need. I'm going to demand that the mayor tell the, Bob Bassnell, to give me 10 jobs so I can save 10 black men's lives.
Address the council, not the audience.
And I got my time, I can address who I want to, right?
No, you'll have to address the council.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Um, oh, the other point of it. We, in the fourth ward, I want you guys of color to know, if young men graduate from high school and go get a job somewhere, we have nowhere to live. You've made the point, not only they call it gentrification, not only is that bad, we don't have nowhere to, there's no apartment, there's nowhere, we need low apartments so bad, it's a shame. You're running everybody, man, you're running everybody out of town. Everybody that voted for you, why, the reason why you're sitting on the council, Bob, my job, all the rest of you guys, is because of the votes and things that came out of the fourth ward. You turned it all apart. We don't have nowhere to live. The people come in town every day, there's a park, there's no park, there's no low income apartment, nowhere. We have $1,500, $1,600. Bob knows that we can't afford none of that in the fourth ward. You're destroying us. You're destroying the fourth ward community. The mayor is. Daniel Hanley, he know, I know, and the rest of them you know too. I need 10 jobs for the young men in the fourth ward. And please tell Carl Wright, your lover, your buddy, and the rest of them to give us some low income apartments in the fourth ward. We've been here longer than you, sir, and which is the fifth best town to live in was in Franklin Township. It was because of the people that lived down in the fourth ward. That's why it was the fifth best town. Thank you very much.
Hi, Valerie Jeswiak, 30 Highwood Road. I just wanted to be, um, put my two cents in about my feelings about the, the development of the Kmart shopping center. I and my mother have lived in the township since December of 1961. I, my father built two houses here and I built a house here and my aunt and uncle built a house here and, um, my uncle was former captain of police in Franklin Township. Anyway, I just want you to know my feelings are, I have a defeatist attitude with all this development. I don't feel I have a say. The way I look at it is a developer comes in, they've got the money, they go to the planning board, the planning board says change this, okay, and they just come back as many times as they need to and they will be granted whatever they want. Um, I understand it's a little bit different. This is asking for a, a change in zoning, it's a bigger thing, but I still feel as though I have no say, like no matter what I say is, you know, they'll get what they want. That's ultimately my feeling. There, I, I know that the residents have thousands of ideas of things that we would like to see and we have issues on Easton Ave as it is and there's a study going on about that. If you want to reduce some traffic, let us go to an Ace Hardware over there instead of going to Bridgewater, North Brunswick or South Plainfield heading towards Easton, towards 287 to go to Home Depot, that sort of thing. Um, you know, any number of things that we, I'd like to see there. I want a Starbucks there. I don't want to go to Cedar Grumway for Starbucks. There should be one in Easton Ave. I can't go to the Starbucks in New Brunswick because you can't park there. There's a lot of great, great eating on, um, Easton Ave in New Brunswick, but you can't park there. It's, you know, ridiculous, but I just wanted that to be heard. There's plenty more to say about it, but thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Dr. Jack Farr. I live at 19 Academy Road, which is right off Easton Avenue. And I just want to encourage the council to again, stick to the master plan. There hasn't been a single person who come, who came to this podium tonight supporting the Kmart apartment complex. No one. No one is supporting, no one is supporting additional warehouses. If you drive down Easton Avenue like I do many times a day, you'll see cars making illegal U-turns at Demont Lane. You'll see speeding all day long down Easton Avenue coming off of 287. You'll see people running light, red lights as if they don't exist. That, that apartment complex will dramatically affect my quality of life and I don't want to see it. And I'd also like to add, just for, just for the record, outside of my military service and four years in college, I've lived here since 1952. And I've seen a lot of changes, some good, some bad. The Kmart proposition is absurd and I don't want to see it. And I don't want to see it for my, myself, my family or my neighbors. Thank you.
My name is Lorraine Suarez. I live at 1228 Easton Avenue. I've been a resident of Franklin Township since 1979 and I am very, very concerned about the additional consideration of putting an apartment complex on Easton Avenue. Not only is it going to affect the traffic, which is unbearable, I can hardly get into my driveway in the evenings or in the mornings when I'm coming, going to work or coming home from work. I'm constantly worried about getting hit in the rear because cars are just speeding by and not in concern that there are residents on Easton Avenue. I want to know what the implication is to the school system to allow another 200 apartments to be built there? Has there been any consideration? I heard people talking about different things, but I haven't heard anything about the implications of, but what it would be doing to our school systems here, which are already busting at the seams. And who is considering this change of zoning? Why was the township considering even a change of a master plan that was developed for safe and reasonable development in our town? It's just unbelievable. It really is unbelievable that you could even consider such a thing. That's all.
Mayor, I'd like to address that just briefly.
It's Mr. Manager.
So, so I understand everything that you just said, but this is what happens when people communicate via social media and other, other ways. I don't know where this site, ma'am, now it's my turn, you're done, and I'm going to answer your question. The answer to your question is at no time did this council make any actions to rezone the Rutgers Plaza property. In fact, what this council did is tell the applicant through our township attorney that the position of the township council was that to grant a use variance through the zoning board for this particular piece of property would be an abrogation of the township council's right to zone and specifically said to the applicant that if they made that application to the zoning board, that the township council would instruct the township attorney to attend that meeting and instruct the township's board of adjustment on that very fact. So in no way did the township council ever condone or consider a rezoning of the Rutgers Plaza property. That's just blatantly false. That's what the township council did. The applicant has every right and they withdrew their application to the zoning board and made an application for an informal hearing to the planning board. I don't know who got in the head of the applicant or their attorney because the township certainly didn't and the township council certainly didn't, but there's a lot of speculation that's being stated as fact that the, that the township council is moving to rezone this property. There's nothing further from the truth. There's never been any discussion about that. This applicant has chosen, as is afforded their right in the ordinances of the township, to make an informal application to the planning board. Whatever their reason for it, go to the planning board meeting on the 12th and make your position known there. This is not the council, the township council that's instructing them to do that. They have a right to do it. It's in the ordinance and they chose to do it. That's it. That's, that's it. It, they don't have a position because this applicant is making an application as their, as is their right under the law and that is what they are doing. The township council won't, there would be no opinion or consideration for anything until there's some other actions that are taken, but no actions have been taken yet. The applicant hasn't even made the presentation to the planning board yet.
For clarification, maybe the attorney could tell us, um, so next week or two weeks when it's on township website, discussion item 11, properties, 940 Easton Avenue, informal presentation to request a zoning change to allow 200 unit apartment complex. So if the planning board is interested in doing that, um, at some point, the council has to agree or work with them to change zoning. Is that not correct, the attorney, please? They go in from the planning board to scheduled hearing to try to get them to zone the change zone. It's on her website. Would it come back?
So the answer.
No, no, I'm asking the attorney, please.
And I understand that she'll agree with.
Okay, but I'm asking the attorney.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
You're asking an attorney who's not familiar with the circumstances, Jim, and it's not fair enough.
But in general, in gen, in general, in general, when an attorney, right, when you go to a planning board meeting to ask for zoning change for something from residential, from commercial to residential, does the.
That's not what's happening here. They're asking for an informal meeting, right?
They're asking for an informal meeting.
Which they have a right to do.
To request a zone change.
And that, and that's their request, but the zoning, the planning board has no authority to do that.
So then my question is procedurally, if the planning board has any interest to change zoning, to allow for 200 unit or any high density residential, doesn't at some point council get involved in that discussion and decision to change the zoning?
I can answer that. Council does zoning. Zoning.
That's the answer.
So to suggest to people in the audience that they should not be telling council their position on something like this because we never would have any say whether we yea or nay it, I think is misleading and I think that up here, we may end up with this decision that's been kicked around for three and a half years and after three and a half years, if it comes back to us, I, I think people would be wise to let people know what their feelings are because we may be, we will be the ones making the ultimate decision, will we not?
And I think that's what Mr. Von Lacher.
And that's what I said, thank you. What I said was, it's the cart before the horse.
Yes. But to tell people not to exercise their right to tell us how they feel about.
I didn't tell anyone that, Mr. Bassnell. I didn't tell anyone that.
Stop.
What I said was that the planning board would have to hear this and that this township council has not been asked to give any consideration to what that question was. Not that these people shouldn't come here and express their opinions. I have never said that and I would never say that. So please, I would expect that you acknowledge that. What I said is that the, the, the next step in this process is a planning board hearing that this township council in committee or as a whole has not given any consideration whatsoever to the rezoning of Rutgers Plaza. In fact, they did just the opposite in the affirmative actions they took several months ago.
Excuse me, excuse me. You don't have the floor. I will stand by Mr. Von Lacher that he did not say you cannot talk or that you should not say things to this council. What he was doing was saying simply that the council's actions have in no way encouraged that project, no way. In fact, quite the opposite. So when, when you come to us and say, why are we considering this? We, we are not considering it, we are not, not considering it. You're, it, it's like something is before the appellate court and you're asking, why isn't the Supreme Court doing something yet? Because it's not the Supreme Court's turn to do anything yet. It has to go through the other steps before it came from us. And I ask you to look at the record as to what we have done so far. And more comments about this during council comments.
So Mayor, just to clarify for the managers and say, I'm not suggesting, if I did, then I apologize, I miscommunicated, that he's telling people they can't exercise their right to free speech. What I'm saying is we were asked to change the zoning and you and him and all of us have stood by and done exactly what you described and I'm proud of our council for it. But the fact is, it keeps wearing its head up and ultimately we will be possibly making the ultimate decision. So I know the manager believes in free speech and to exercise their right, but the way it was presented, I can't speak for the audience, but myself, it kind of seemed like he was suggesting that here is not the forum, go to the planning board meeting because this council hasn't made any dis. No, we haven't. Maybe they're here, maybe they're here because they want to make sure, our hope, that we stick to what we have suggested is our position and for people to be reminded that, that is what they want. So I don't see why it would be not seen as we're a pertinent part of this decision-making process. No, we haven't. And I'm proud of the fact that we haven't granted them their request because they came originally asking us to change zoning and that's why it's been going around in circles and probably may land back here. So I thank you for coming and sharing your opinions and I suggest, and, and thank you for the polite, professional way you have. And, and, and I suggest if you have an opinion for or against, that you continue to do it in the forums that will have a vote to make the ultimate decisions. And as of right now, that's planning and council, although since this, this project has a habit of bouncing around boards and committees, you might want to stay on top of it because it could end up back at the zoning board or god knows where. Thank you.
Let's go back to.
And—
—we're in public discussion. Let's go back to public discussion.
Terry Dawson, 18 Lebed Drive in Somerset. When my friends from other townships ask about Franklin Township, I would love to tell them that it's a progressive, forward-looking, innovative community, but unfortunately, I can't, because all we do here is follow trends. People who are building hotels, let's build hotels. People building office space, let's build office space. Look where that got us. Now we're following the, let's build a warehouse trend. You have over 68,000 people living in Franklin. Somebody's got to have a good idea for a new use of property in the town. And as I've said before here, I'm all for taking these unoccupied buildings and repurposing them or replacing them with something that's innovative, but when we do that, we can't make it the status quo. We've got to make sure that the impermeability levels that we set by ordinance are abided by. We have to make sure that variances aren't given out like Halloween candy, because that's what I've seen in some of these boards. You talk about notification of people, and they mentioned in the beginning, it's on the bulletin board here. How many people see that? 20? It's also on the website. How many people think to go to the website? It's in the newspapers. How many people do you see here that are in their 20s that read newspapers? You see any? No. So the young people in the town have no idea what's going on. You talk about social media. These people talked about social media, but it's, it's our social media. It's the old people's social media. It's not what the kids are using. All right? So, I would suggest that you garner some suggestions from the town. How are you going to do that? I don't know. Maybe your email list, maybe town meetings that are publicized, I don't know how you're going to publicize it to the younger people, maybe tap into. Maybe have a contest for high school students for ideas of what we should do in the town. I know the last time you asked them, it took about 20 years to build a skateboard park after skateboarding, after skateboarding fad was over, and you had to rip it down and put soccer fields up instead. That's an example of us being behind the trend, behind the curve all the time. I know if you get suggestions from people, you're going to, it's going to be massive. You would need some sort of collating committee, and I'm sure there are a lot of people in Franklin who would volunteer to help you organize that information and come out with suggestions that would be new, not the stuff that's already been tried. When there, I really think there should be ordinances for rebuilds. As I said, hold to the 60% with the impervial surface. Also, planning board last time, they are adhering exactly to the minimums the state requires. Why don't we, since you're talking about solar energy, all warehouses built in the town must come with solar panels, not solar-ready so that the tenant can decide whether or not they want to put solar panels on it. Also, charging stations. Four. Are you looking into the future? General Motors says that by 2030, 40% of what's coming off their line is going to be completely electric cars, and yet these applications that come in stick to the minimum four charging stations. Okay? Fire suppression. Last planning board meeting I was at, they said their fire suppression was sprinklers. You realize there are a lot of chemicals that react with water. All the alkalis react with water. Doesn't have to be the alkaline metals, like potassium. It can be an alkaline metal, and the reactions they have are staggering. They're all explosive. A lot of them produce hydrogen and oxygen. Explosion. Does anybody look into any of these things? We don't know what they're storing in there. Actually, what happens is in a, in a warehouse, the fire starts, sprinklers come on. The way it puts out the fire is that it cools down the fire. How does it do that? By changing it to steam. These metals are more reactive with steam than they are with water, and yet we don't know what's going to be in there. One other thing that's kind of off-topic with the traffic studies, they always come in with the same exact traffic study. We're going to increase the traffic by a fraction of a percent, and the state says that we should expect that it's really going to go up like 1.3% or something like that, but they never look at the cumulative effect. Each one of them is individual. Is there some way we could get these traffic studies to come in and show us how much more traffic is actually going to be added? Because they're just looking at one warehouse. They're not talking about the rest of them. I was at an environmental meeting, probably three months ago, when Community Solar came in and did their presentation to the environmental committee, and she said the solar panels would be located on the roofs of warehouses. And with the Elizabeth Avenue project, what are you doing there? That was zoned to have a solar array, and now it's prospective, it's supposed to be a warehouse. That's all.
Warren Juan, 28 Jays Corner. She stole my thunder, for the most part, but I, I want to reiterate several things that have been spoken about this evening. One is that I'm very confused, because I've been to council meetings, I've been to planning board meetings, and it seems like a Three Stooges go-around. Fingers point this way, and I just don't understand the, the, the ability for the township council who's voted into office to not have the final word on projects when you create ordinances specifically regarding projects. So when you don't have adherence to variances, you don't have adherences, and you have exceptions that the planning board has given out like candy, is just mind-boggling. And we heard it tonight that from Mr. Vornlocker, and you can go straight back to the videotape, but he basically deflected and said, you should go to the planning board. But you don't have to.
No, it was directed to that resident right there.
Mr. Vornlocker, let him speak, and then you can speak.
And I will do it in my report.
You're, you're using my time up, sir. The, the, the problem is that we have a planned, planning board that's gone off the rails. You have an individual in the economic development office that's going out and trying to get low-hanging fruit wherever he can, which today is warehouses, and tomorrow will be skeleton buildings. And so what are we going to do when you have a bad economy, and Amazon decides to cut back on their employment, and you have all these overbuilt spec warehouses that have not been filled, do not have leases, and then they come in and they say, well, that's fine with me because I'm township council and I'm collecting taxes, but meanwhile, we have dead space again. And this is what's been occurring over and over again, as opposed to, as that lady said, why aren't we forethinking this? Why aren't we looking at new prospects? If you have vacant buildings, have them build a solar array on it. Why aren't we thinking ahead of the game? And when we point fingers of going back to the planning board and, and, and trying to, to, to convince them to do certain things, they immediately turn around and say, well, that's the township. You know, it's, it's, it's quite frightening when, when an individual comes in here and he doesn't have, or she doesn't have the explanations. At the end of the day, we voted you guys in because you represent us, so represent Thank you.
Hey, council wants to comment?
Hi, Alex Strauss, 285, Haslett Way, Somerset. Where would the Kmart Levin get the idea that the planning department might be friendly to them? Is it because every single development that comes along, warehouse gets rubber stamped and passed? Why not, you know? What are they up to lose, really? And then we could have, what, maybe elected officials, some of them, who could hide behind the boards and say, well, that's not us, that's the boards, that's the boards, that's not us, we didn't do it. Well, who appointed the boards again? Who appointed the boards? Okay. Now, I just briefly want to go away and focus on another idiotic warehouse project that's proposed, and it's going to be rubber stamped on October 19th at the planning board. We know they're going to pass it, they're going to pass it like all of them. This one is Puleo, P-U-L-E-O, okay? And this, this warehouse project is actually, it's going to be next to a hotel that's going up. It was passed 2017 by the planning board, a Hampton Inn, it's going up on the other side of the Doubletree, and perhaps partly because of COVID, it's still under construction. Okay? Now, this warehouse is going to go right next to that hotel. Isn't that great? That's how far we've come. Forty-four years ago, Franklin was the envy. The Somerset Marriott went up, and probably the envy of the state, one of the only two Marriotts in the state, and it was right here in Somerset. The other one was Saddle Brook, as far as I know. Okay? There was no courtyard, no residency, nothing. Okay? Now that building melts a delta by Marriott. It's a cut, it's a cut-down, but at least it's open. Now, I'm just a layperson, I can't read plans, but it certainly seems that this building, this Puleo International Building, is going to go right next to this new hotel. I'm not sure which side, because I don't know how to read architectural plans. Maybe that's deliberate, okay? Maybe it should be spread all over the place for people to read, but it's the height of idiocy. How many people book a hotel room and say, well, I'd like a view of the warehouse, you know? I mean, come on. That's how far we've come. Yeah, I know, I know. You can't tell private property, you can't tell people how to develop their property. Well, it's zoning, and who does the zoning? The planning department. And who does the planning department work for? The council and the mayor. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Vornlocker, you wanted to.
I can handle it in my report. I will address some of the issues that I was trying to make clear, but apparently wasn't clear, and I will make it again when I give my report.
Seeing no one come forward, I move to close. Second comment.
Second.
Second.
Well, in favor of closing council comments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public comment is closed. We are now on to council comments. Going to do something a little bit unprecedented. I'm going to speak first. Already spoken about the letter, so I don't have to speak about— So the, where, the Kmart has come up. I think council has taken a strong stance in regard to that. We've done something unprecedented in having the attorney be involved in the letter they wrote. I would, there was a question about what is the policy of council meeting with developers? I've used the word policy before. I would say it's more a culture. Is my understanding that since about 2009, 2008, the culture has been that council doesn't directly interact with developers or, or owners of properties? I've said that in public. It's not a law, and it's not against the law for council members to do that, but I've said that we don't do that, and now, because I don't want to be called a liar, some council members have chosen to do that, so I want to announce that so that it's, it's out in the open, and I don't hear from someone, but you said. Till now, I do not know of it happening before. I understand some people are going to do that. I am against them doing that, especially in the Kmart case, because if they're going to present to the planning board, council members can just watch it on TV. There's no reason for them, in my mind, for them to directly communicate. We'll start down here with Ms. Uden, your council comments.
Good evening. Thank you. I typically provide an update on things that I've been doing for the last, from the last council comment to now, but I've heard the residents come up here, and I wanted to also address some of the things, because I feel strongly about a couple of things that came up as a feedback. Traffic safety concern, I've mentioned a couple times to, internally to our team, Mr. Vornlocker and Public Safety Director. And regarding Amazon as well, so I think those are things that I know personally, some of you guys have written to me about Amazon when I was in Canal Walk, when I was in Somerset Run, when we did, you know, town halls there. These are the same, same common concerns that were raised, so I am hearing you. I will follow through to see what's happening, if something is not being done again, because I think that's important. We should not keep having trucks bypass us, and, you know, we worry about our safety there. The other thing that was mentioned is about the master plan review. I think, you know, education awareness to the public is really important. I always encourage that we do some things that the public understands, the background. If that's something that's being asked, is, you know, we should educate our residents on whether it's ordinance or a master plan, then I think I agree that we need to communicate better on that. And I think, you know, our deputy mayor mentioned about communication earlier. I agree to that. I think, you know, that's something that we need to work on. If it's, if there's a lack of communication, and there's something that, when we're sending out a document, there's no background to it, I think, you know, if I received it, I would have questioned it as well. So I think that's something, these are all valid concerns, and I would just want to tell you guys that I hear you, and I just jotted it down so that, you know, as internally as well, I can track where things are going with that. So, that's my update. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Vasinella.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm going to just read about a press release that came out, because I'm happy to hear about things like this. Franklin Retail Center sold for 12.95 million. Franklin Court, which is at the corner of Hamilton Street and Franklin Boulevard. I don't know, some of you may have been around long enough to know that there was a place called Sal's Pizza there in the 60s and the 70s, and Mike's Subs there in the 80s. Anyway, shopping center's gone through a lot of rough times, a lot of occupancy issues, a lot of issues in the area, and probably one of the most difficult malls to keep and maintain in Franklin Township. Okay. So I'm pretty proud of what they've done by resurrecting it. Franklin Court Retail Center sold for 12.95 million. Cushman &amp; Wakefield, a real estate services firm, announced on August 16th, the 42,000-square-foot retailer located 920 Hamilton Street is anchored by Walgreens, KFC, both of which weren't there for the first several decades, and goes on to say Franklin Court is strategically located shopping center, offering convenience and accessibility to its dense surrounding I'm happy to see that shopping centers that have the will and the desire to make themselves successful by doing what they need to do to find services and businesses, to provide products and services and goods to the surrounding, usually densely populated communities. Do what they were zoned to do, do it well, and apparently do it at a profit, because they sold for more than what I believe they paid, and I wish them well, and I, I'd like to see that type of stuff repeated all over Franklin when we have shopping centers that could and should remain commercial. Addressing what the mayor had mentioned, I totally respect any council person who has a desire to meet privately, in a, in a private room with developers that have been trying to push rezoning change for three years, and I don't say that sarcastically, I do. I lived through a period of time, and along with the mayor, that we pretty much spent years of our life trying to change the culture, a culture where the township did not trust government, did not trust our dealings with developers, and a lot of what—I think we've done great development in this town, but I think there's been some real whoppers, as they say. And I applaud the people who now see by this warehouse situation that you better get out in front of an issue if you have an opinion, because otherwise, you end up, after the fact, chasing your tail, spending money on lawyers and T-shirts and everything else because you didn't realize what was going on. So to voice your opinion to the people who have the ultimate say, I think is a fantastic thing, and I encourage more of it, and I appreciate the ideas that were brought to this table. I'm going to ask, if there is a meeting, which I don't know how or when it was sanctioned, but if there is one, and it is totally legal, there's nothing illegal about it. but if there is one, and it is totally legal, there's nothing illegal about it, I just think at this point, nothing good can come of that. I'm going to ask, I don't know if I have to do it through a motion, that if there is such a meeting, that there's a stenographer in a room to make a permanent transcript of everything said in that room. So maybe our attorney could tell us if I do that through a motion. Again, I have no idea of the meeting or the details of it. I was never informed about it. I heard about it a few days back. So if it takes place, I hope it doesn't, I guess I make the motion, attorney, to direct the manager to have a stenographer and a permanent transcript made of the meeting.
Can I just clarify?
I want a stenographer to make an official permanent transcript of every word said in the room.
In the room for what? What are we talking about?
Well, I hear there's a meeting set up between developers and lawyers and council people in a closed room. Yes.
And I would say that, given the fact that the township will be legally represented, it would be inappropriate to do that. The township attorney will be a party to that meeting, and it's attorney-client privilege, Mr. Vasinella.
What is inappropriate about having...
I just said what it is. It's attorney-client privilege.
I thought you were talking about this informal meeting.
I'm talking about, and again, I don't really know what the meeting is, how it's classified, but if you have developers presenting whatever they're presenting, I would imagine they're presenting what they're going to present the following week.
When is this meeting?
I don't know. Maybe Mr. Warren Locker could fill us in. I just have no idea.
But if it's a private meeting with attorneys present on behalf of the developer and Mr. Raynone on behalf of this township...
That's what it would be if there was a meeting.
So we're not allowed, we're not attorney-client to what?
For both, I mean, there's, you know, Mr. Vasinella, as I'm sure you're aware, any of these discussions then could become fodder for a legal action, should that applicant bring a legal action against the township.
Well, what is there that is going to...
You tell me.
No, but I'm asking, I have no idea what the meeting involves. I'm a little upset. Is there an agenda? Why can't there be a record of what's discussed in rooms?
I would say that you should ask your fellow council members that.
Not a public meeting. It's happening between two attorneys, between two parties being represented, one of which is the township, being represented by the township attorney.
So we'll never know what was said in that room? Could I ask when it's scheduled for and what the agenda is? There should be a written record of that, no?
It would be much like any other committee meeting that we have, Mr. Vasinella, right?
It's unlike any committee meeting I've ever seen in 20 years, so I do not, I do not agree with that. I've never, back to what the mayor said, it's not a law, but especially a case like this, I have never seen a meeting afforded. And again, it's legal and it's okay. I just would like to know there's a permanent record of what was said, and I'm not sure how having attorneys in a room bars us from having that permanent record. If it's illegal, obviously then I'm not going to make the motion. If it's not illegal, I'd like to make the motion. So is it illegal to have a transcript of a meeting?
There's no basis for you to have a private meeting.
Okay. Can I motion that we, direct manager, do not have the meeting?
It's not, I don't call meetings, Mr. Vasinella. Council members call meetings.
Okay, so then we call them, then we can un-call them. So I'll make a motion that at least, well, I didn't say at least, until further notice that we just do not have a meeting with a developer, let this play out in public at the planning board.
Of a motion, do we have a second?
Of one.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Could you reiterate that motion, please? I, from what I, I didn't understand it at all. I'm sorry. So could our township attorney or our township manager, who might be able to explain it better or...
I believe that what Councilman Vasinella said, maybe his motion, was that the township council not meet with anyone. That's pretty much what he said.
Not meet with the developers seeking a zoning change. Yes. That's my motion.
That's why I said one edit.
The developer's not identified, the date of the meeting isn't identified, and it's a private meeting.
Well, this is sounding worse every minute.
It's a private meeting between two council, each representing a party.
I'm, I'm...
I am too.
I am too.
I do not understand.
Okay, so... Okay, well, the motion's on the table.
Make motions in the middle? That's just a procedural.
Yeah, you can, at any time during a public council meeting, you can make a motion from the floor. It's done. I'm not, I'm still not clear as to the, what he's referring to, and maybe you, Mr. Warren Locker, you have a better idea of this meeting, but I'm not aware of it, but you have the details of it, but...
May I make a comment on the subject?
Yes, we are in the discussion.
Okay, so the discussion is if a resident or a taxpayer or a constituent has to meet with the council, with their attorney and our attorney, as elected officials of this town, are we saying we can't meet anybody? Notwithstanding a business that is providing, that has been in town for many, many years, has been a regular taxpayer, the idea of the meeting, we don't even know what it is, you are not going to even give them the opportunity to hear them in presence of the council, both the councils? I think I found, I find that little unfair to not to be able to... It is like, if your attorney would want to come and meet the council in front of our council, are we going to say, "No, we can't meet"? I think that's, that's a comparison.
You are, you are because...
That's not how government works.
So one of the questions that I would have here, and this is where I was going to go with my report, and this is where I will now go now because it's relevant to this discussion. Ms. Jeszbiak asked and made several statements about things that she would like to see in Rutgers Plaza. A Starbucks, a Ace Hardware store, if I recall correctly, things like that. I often wonder how residents, so what I was getting at with my statement about going to the planning board is that without you going and telling the applicant what things you think that they should put in their shopping center, this township council has very little ability to convey that to an applicant who's going in front of one of the quasi-judicial boards, be it planning board or board of adjustment, all right? And one of the ways that they can convey those things is through staff, and we have met with applicants for the old office building on atrium next to the warehouse, that gentleman, next to the hotel that that gentleman talked about. We've met with the applicants on that about the use of those properties. We've met with the applicant...
No, not with council in the room.
No, Mr. Vasinella, let me finish, please. One of the things the staff has met, all right? So you come here very much with, I don't want to use the word enthusiasm, but that you care, and I believe that you care about what happens and what's built. And you tell this township council what you want them to do. I don't know how they do that unless they have the ability to convey that to the very people that you don't want them to meet with. That's, so if you want Levin management, who is the owners of Rutgers Plaza and has been the owners of Rutgers Plaza for over 50 years, if you want them to do something other than build apartments there, then you need to tell them that. Now, one of the forums that you can do that in is this informal hearing in front of the planning board. Another way that you can tell them that is through your elected officials. But your elected officials can't tell them that unless they meet with them. That's a forum in which that message can be conveyed to them. The township council has taken the position already that they feel that the construction of 200 apartments on that lot is an abrogation of their right to zone. They changed the zone, general business zone, to exclude high density, any type of residential housing where it was previously permitted up until several years ago. And the decision of this council was to say, "We took that out of the ordinance, and now you immediately want to get a variance to allow it." And they took that position and said, "No." Now, if you want something else there, which I think everyone seems to want, other than that, that's the consensus opinion that I get from this audience tonight, then somehow or another, that message has to be conveyed to them, right? So the way that it gets conveyed is you go to the planning board meeting and tell them, or these elected officials, that you're lobbying for them to do something. That's how things get done. And it is not, it is not, ma'am, I can't, I can't even talk to you. I'm just, I'm telling you...
The public needs to be quiet. You had your public question.
So that's, that's one of the ways that it can be done. And it is done like that all over the state, all over the country, where people have an idea on what they want to do with a piece of property, and they bring it to their elected officials. And that's been done, and it's been done here in the past. It has been done, maybe not to this degree, but it has been done. And, and so that's, that's the short answer to your, I should say, the long answer to your question about Starbucks and warehouse and hardware stores and the things that you think are appropriate. You need to tell the planning board that. And you need to tell the applicant who's making that presentation at the planning board. But you've also told the township council that tonight.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I think, one, I have clarification, and then I want to make a comment. Are we now having a discussion on his motion?
Yes.
Yes. So, yes, please.
So I guess, and you can answer since you made the motion, so are you saying that, are you saying for this specific property owner in this meeting, or are you saying in general?
I'm saying, and I'm not sure what meetings are being referred to, no, no, but I'm saying, because in the last 15 years I've been following this, I don't know ever that, first of all, let me put it this way, I'm sure Levin's watching this. I don't think you have to have a meeting so people, council people could relay to them. I think this has been the word for three and some years, three-plus years, that people want to see different things like this. The idea of using the Starbucks or Ace Hardware as a reason to have this meeting is absurd. So I think that anybody coming forward with a zoning change, I mean, I don't think there's anything productive about meeting because that's where you have staff and open forums, but I wouldn't go that far because people may have a reason they come up with to meet sometime that where there's no zoning change involved. I wouldn't feel strongly. I wouldn't attend, but I wouldn't feel strongly. So when there is a zoning change involved, a major zoning change, I would like...
A variance, a request for variance.
Well, request for, yeah, major change of use is zoning change. I think it's good to not meet there. To think that Levin doesn't know people want different things and they need council to go in a private room, yes, so I would like to direct the manager not to hold any meetings relevant to having council people in the room where a major zoning change, and whoever it is, them, their architects, their PR people, whoever, whoever's presenting, but on behalf of that project, to change a zone, I believe should be done in public. Yes.
Okay. So, okay. So I understand, so, and just, so, because you said a lot of words, and I want to say it back succinctly. So what you're saying is that you would have the preference that if a property manager, right, or a developer wanting to do business in town, that if they are in the motion of doing a variance, that council would not meet with them anywhere but a public forum?
Well, a lot of this comes through a working committee, so in a way, any message or ideas are brought to us committees. But to meet privately, yes, I do, yes, I feel, that's how I feel.
So for example, so this potential meeting or meetings, addition, like, you know, fuzzy about the details, admittedly, but the request has come through several committees, right? We talked about an economic development. We thought about it. We were very strong considering it and having a conversation because the economic development to that resident's point, that we're not particularly creative, right? I'll agree. We're not creative. It's residential warehouse, residential warehouse, residential warehouse. So what, what, what is, what are we going to do, right? Like, what, what are we going to do to everyone's point about governing and being assertive and being aggressive, right? And I'm not questioning the thing on the table about the appropriateness of someone coming to us trying to make a major change and meeting with us. I am talking about the culture that came up that is feeding into what this motion is. And, and I preface this because I came from the state, right? I came from the state down. I worked in the legislature. I run government affairs for an offshore wind developer and have to meet with municipalities all the time to have very similar discussions about, hey, we're coming into your town, what do you want? Like, how can we support you? How can we be invested in good neighbor, right? So from my end, I guess I struggle, right? Because I'm coming from a different culture. I'm coming from an aggressive culture. I'm coming from a culture, we are not governing because we are afraid that people are going to be angry with us, because people are always going to be angry with us because we're elected officials. I want to be governing because it's the right thing to do for the people, and that we're trying to be creative, and we're trying to be progressive, and we're trying to think outside of the box. And sometimes we have to throw our muscle around to do that, right? Sometimes we have to make it very clear to people who are doing things in our town that that is not acceptable to us. You need to come to something different. You need to come with something more creative. You need to be doing something better. And unfortunately, sometimes it takes someone else in the room and not staff. So as a culture, in terms of we don't meet with X, Y, and Z, I would disagree with that because if they aren't listening, and they're not, right? You aren't happy. You are not happy. So it's not working. It's not. You are so profoundly unhappy with the warehouses and the way that we're doing things. And I'm not talking about going against the master plan. I'm talking about following it as a guidance document, but challenging everyone in the room on how we can do better. How can we be more creative? Yes, we should have town halls, and we should be soliciting ideas. Yes, we should be doing all of that. We 100% should be taking all of your feedback. And if we do it wrong, if we do it wrong and we upset you, you vote us out. That is your job. We are accountable to you. Like, but the thing is, and this is what, and, and that's fine, right? That is, you're right. Because I can't, if you are unhappy, you are unhappy, and I want you to do what you feel is necessary. But I guess, right, and I, I, I agree. So that's what I'm saying is like, to your point, Jimmy, I think that makes sense. I'm not in disagreement with that motion. I am struggling to separate it from the idea that we can't be assertive and aggressive and call on these people to tell them what we want and what we will not stand for. And it hasn't happened. And that's, and if you, this is probably the most animated you've ever seen me, but that's my frustration, right? Because you guys are right. You are 100% right in terms of that.
But you may, how about if we have a discussion, I mean, where they come in, anybody from the public, and they could submit all the ideas, and we can send a copy of the tape, or they can sit in the back of the audience and hear us...
We're already, we're currently in a motion. We need to finish this one.
I'm saying that, I agree with getting proactive.
I would like to make that motion when it's my time.
Okay.
But we can't because we're in a current motion.
But I'm saying to support those ideas, we should move forward.
I'm saying all that to say that culturally, I do not disagree with the appropriate measures in place, right? That conversations are had. I am not opposed to reporting out on any of those types of conversations. If it's appropriate to have those conversations in existing committees like economic development, that makes sense. There's a framework for it. But I guess, and I'm going to separate the cultural question from that, where I agree, Councilman Vasinella, that the optics and the appropriateness comes into question when there's going to be a major change, and that should probably be done in a public forum. And I'm, I just, and I'm just clarifying it, that the culture is that if we are doing it appropriately, we are reporting out and using existing framework, that there's nothing inherently, and please tell me if I'm wrong... inherently, and please tell me if I'm wrong, there's nothing inherently wrong.
No.
With having a discussion with someone who wants to do business in this town. Because it's like, you know, I don't have kids, I have a cat, I'm going to admit it. But if I had a kid, what are your intentions with my kid? This town is my, what are your intentions? And I feel that I should be able to call them out. And if I'm unhappy, I'm unhappy. But I think, Mayor, you were trying to ground me down, so go ahead.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say.
You've already, you've already discussed.
Okay, excuse me, Mayor. Jimmy, Jimmy here is afforded to multiple opportunities to talk back and forth, and I express an opinion.
Let the, let the attorney speak, and then you can speak again.
I, I think we've gotten a little far afield here, because right now, I'm not even sure what, what your motion is that's on the table, but.
His motion is clear.
Motion's very clear.
That this meeting not occur.
Okay. So you're asking that a meeting between the two attorneys for two separate parties not happen?
No, no.
No, please. Right now, what I'm saying is I believe it's time to adopt a stance that when you have somebody coming in seeking a major zoning change like that, one that's been kicked around and denied, well, denied that there was no interest in for how many years, and now it's trying to find its way through a private room. I don't not want.
Mr. Vasinella.
Yes. Anywhere there's a zoning change like that, or.
Mr. Vasinella.
What would you like me to do, Mayor?
I, I, you're not going to come up with a policy tonight that generally.
No, no, okay.
Let me finish. I think you might want to stick to this meeting.
All right, let's stick to this meeting, because I don't want to make it broad. It's just that I thought it was clear that it was about this meeting, but then it seems that, okay, so let's just say with this project, any meetings that have, that should be done in a public forum. And if we want to have the audience, if we want to have people bring ideas, we could do it here next week, a next meeting and discussion item. That's my, that's my motion. I believe it's the same one that I originally made, so, with this meeting.
Wait, wait, the attorney was just.
I'm sorry, it wasn't, it wasn't done, ma'am.
Yes.
There is nothing wrong with parties coming together with their attorneys to discuss matter. Can't always be done in public, even when you come to these meetings and they're closed specifically for certain matters, acquisition of property, labor negotiations, want to tip, you know, the township to tip their hand, like, oh, there's a great piece of property over there.
I'm not showing.
And like, you know, the property owners watching the meeting and hears, we're interested in buying a great piece of property. No, those discussions occur initially between the parties, between township and your township attorney, and the other, the other party at hand.
Okay, well, we're talking about council, and that's the motion.
There are no council people present at those meetings, again, because it would be in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. You're all here because of the Open Public Meetings Act, to do the business of the town, to conduct the business of the town. But I am saying that there is nothing wrong with allowing this meeting or any similar meeting with two attorneys present, two parties present, two.
His, his motion is about a meeting that has been proposed that involves council members meeting with developers.
With less, with less than a quorum.
Okay, with less than a quorum.
Okay, yes, that's.
Okay, I was not, I was not understanding that there were going to be.
No, and I understand, and, and I know you're, you're not.
I got a good education tonight from everyone.
No, and I understand that.
I understand that, but under the Open Public Meetings Act, if there's less than a, if there's less than a quorum, that meeting can go forward.
We're not discussing whether it's legal or not.
Well, nobody said, didn't say anything illegal, nothing about that. It's just, I think it's a better way to proceed now because I think it's pretty obvious what the town wants, what the council wants, and if people want to share ideas, let's have a discussion item, and I welcome ideas.
But aren't you stifling the town and what they want?
Okay.
I, I, again, I don't even, I don't have the purpose of this meeting.
Are you saying that this isn't even a motion we can make? Is that what you're saying?
My recommendation is that you not pass this motion, is the resolution.
Mr. Trump.
Okay, but, but that's for council to decide, and I don't know.
Yes, that's up to you. I'm giving you my.
When, I've never heard attorney chime in in that degree, but.
And my legal advice on it, and my, that a meeting between two attorneys and two parties should be allowed to go. Now, you're talking about this specific meeting.
I'm not, we're not, he's, he's not objecting to two parties and the attorneys. He's objecting to the presence of council.
The presence of council.
Yes. The way we've been doing it for at least 15 years, that's all I'm saying.
Mr. Embarrassen's been waiting to speak.
I just have a couple of comments. This meeting, we have multiple committees in the town, and one of the committees is Economic Development Committee, where I sit, and Councilman Vasinella also sits. So that committee did decide to go with this particular meeting many months ago. Secondly, subsequent to that, this council unanimously decided to send our position, what, to make our position known to the zoning board and to the applicant by directing our township attorney to go to the zoning board hearing. Nobody has changed, in this council, has changed that position. I want everybody to know. Nobody has changed that position. Now, the meeting is, is by, requested by a resident, a taxpayer, a constituent, with their attorney, and the township has our attorney. So it's going to be held in the presence of those attorneys, and the applicant, Levin Management, has asked for a set of council members in that. So there's nothing illegal, there's no side deals, no hanky panky going on. It is a simple informational gathering. If we all know how you feel, and we are in supportive of that, we have voted nine to zero approving that resolution. So I feel there is nothing wrong in two parties meeting and exchange information. It is a very myopic view, very selectively to say, oh, you can meet, it has to be done in public. So if we apply that logic, as the attorney said, we could never go into executive sessions. When we go to executive sessions, we are, the attorney is present, and the council members have a discussion about sensitive matters. Now, is that, are we going to ban executive session forever? Because everything should be open in the public discussion? So conceptually, I have a lot of difficulty grasping what is being asked here. And that's, that's my.
Mayor.
Right, nothing? And I will speak. As to the township manager's ideas, the way for council, how else can council get this message to the developers, is the way that we've been doing it for the last 10 years or more, through staff. That's one way to do it. I'm entirely behind the idea of if these people really want to meet, of doing it in public. That's the only way I would want it done, would be in public. Why would I get, so why doesn't, then everyone putting up an application, why shouldn't they get it in public? Reason is because we did an unusual thing in this case. They were going before zoning board, and we basically said, we're going to send our attorney to tell the zoning board this and that. I would say anytime we want to take that step, then I would be willing to hear from the applicant directly and do that in person. However, it essentially is being done if they're going before the planning board. I don't know why we need an extra meeting. We can, we can watch the planning board meeting, we can make comments on that later. I just don't like the idea of the face-to-face between council and a developer. I'm not saying it's illegal, and I'm not saying there's anything untoward being done by the council members who want to do that. I just think, brought up today, openness in this is very important. Don't think the example of executive session is a good example because we're in there with our attorney, maybe a staff expert, but I don't recall an executive session where an applicant or a developer or someone else was in the. I don't think that's.
Yeah, I apologize, Mayor. I apologize, Mayor. I missed what you were saying.
I was talking to Mr. Embarrassen's example. So if I could reframe, reframe the motion, is that, Mr. Managers, you know the date of, I guess, now that is in part, that there not be a meeting that includes council with the developer of the Kmart project or the owner of the Kmart property unless it is in public.
And the only amendment may.
Would you accept that as the.
I was going to say, I would add, though, or anybody acting on their behalf.
Okay. And anyone acting on the developer or owner's at behalf?
Correct.
Okay, and Mr. Onajaka, you seconded that motion?
Yes.
You agree with that change?
Yes, I agree with the change.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, we've had a discussion. Does anyone want to amend that motion? Councilwoman Pruitt, you, Councilwoman Pruitt, you alluded to amending the motion. Do you want to try to amend the motion?
I'm, I think it's, I think the, I think your changing kind of makes the, the motion, the potential amendment, I would say.
Okay, so I covered it in your.
I think so, but I think, just when you did that, are you saying that any discussion with Levin or the representatives in perpetuity on Kmart? Are you saying for this particular proposal that is going to before planning board? Because I feel like that is really.
I would say for this proposal, I, I would, I would hate to think a month from now having the same discussion here, because they again asked for a meeting, but on, on this basic proposal.
That's going before the planning board?
Yes.
Mayor, would you amend that to any residential proposal?
I, I, I wouldn't want to get that, who knows what the future brings? Let's just.
Well, okay. It's just, they come back and say, oh, so we could have a meeting if we discuss 199 residential units as opposed to 200. I just think it's best to keep this project, this project, in the public forums. So this project is what I thought you meant.
Can you define what this?
I was just going to say, how are you identifying?
Any, any projects related, any projects related to this site, yes.
Well, you might not want to say that, Mr. Vasinella, and here's why. There's currently an application in front of the planning board related to the Burger King on that site, so that would be affected by it, and that's just simply replacing it with another fast food restaurant. So.
But what would council be moving in private?
Well, because you said you would have any discussions at all, I'm just saying there's other things that take place on this particular site that there might, it might be of interest. Maybe not, but others might.
All he's asking for is that such discussions not include council directly meeting with the developer.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know why everybody keeps trying to twist it. That's all I'm saying. All I'm saying.
Now, I.
There's no, I'm saying, yes, Mayor, like you said, no, no meetings where it's in private, but that's, I, I guess, you restate your motion and hopefully we can get to a vote. Because I don't understand what this big rush all of a sudden to change how we've been doing business for the last 15 years. If somebody wants to put another fast food restaurant in the Burger King, we should leave it open so we could have private meetings with council and the developer? That's a simple thing, goes through a planning board.
So I said, all I said was, don't just say everything related to the site.
I think we're getting close to this. I do have to ask one question.
Thank you.
Can, can we pass a rule that restricts the action of another council? Can I, can I tell Mr. Vasinella, you can't, or can five of us tell Mr. Vasinella, you can't, can't do X? That he can't play golf one day?
No, no, I'm not, yeah, I'm not saying, council could put that up individually on their own, I'm talking about a government sanctioned meeting, that's the, yeah, I thought that's what you were referring to.
All right, no, I, I.
I trust our council members.
All right, I just wanted to not, I don't like stepping beyond our power.
No, that's all. We'd never tell what people have to do in their own personal life.
Yes, go ahead. Can I, can I rephrase the motion?
Okay.
Going back and forth on it.
You can suggest a rephrasing of the motion.
That's very correct. And I, and I think I just added a, a word or two. A councilman has made a motion that there not be a private meeting with the developer, council members present, guarding, and again, because I don't know this property, it's regarding the Kmart project?
920 Eastern Avenue.
Is that the proper, what?
Levin Management property at 920 Eastern Avenue?
A motion not to, that there not be a private meeting with the developer, with council members present, guarding Kmart project 920 Eastern, with.
Could I ask a question, please?
Or anyone acting on their behalf.
Mr. Wright, you haven't spoken, you're welcome to speak.
And, and I, I just want to make sure that I get this clear, and I guess I'll ask the attorney or township manager, Mr. Voynlocker, if we were to do this, would this open up to say, well, you did it for Joe, and you pinpointed it for Joe, but I went in on that, could you change that to make it pinpoint for me? And if you don't, I'm going to go down to Mary Bick Road and sue you. How does that work?
We're not doing something for someone, we're, we're saying we're not going to do something. Not saying we are going to do something, we're not going to do something.
A meeting is being canceled for this specific project, not initially, as I understood it broadly. So we're just dealing with this one specific project and we're saying, or you are saying, not want the private meeting.
I believe the way that Mayor's motion, I was fine with.
And are we defining private as not open to the public? That's what you mean by private?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Can we define, and I hate, I hate that I'm asking this, but, you know, these things have repercussions, so I want to make sure that we're, we're getting the intent of what we want to do. So when we say developer, can we name the developer, right? Because I know that there's conversations where like Levin and the developer, they're the same person, but there might be a case where.
The applicant is Levin Management.
The applicant is Levin.
And who the applicant is.
So we're saying with this, that we will not talk to Levin Management, who, who's the developer, but also is the owner of the property, that we're saying that we will never talk to them about that site or this project related to it.
Council members face-to-face.
Will not meet with them in private to discuss the development of that property. That's a nutshell.
You can bring it before council again to change that, we could have, we could live through this again.
We could.
And it can change that.
I don't know if I could.
Okay, so we're saying that we will never talk in a closed setting, not public meeting, with Levin Management about the Kmart property, ever? Is that, is that?
Well, if we means council members face-to-face, then yes.
Okay, so, so council, council members face-to-face in that meeting?
Right.
Okay. And that.
That meeting can happen without council, that's fine.
Okay. But, but the door is still open for another property owner to request a meeting. In theory, we couldn't take that meeting? And I'm in the.
Another property owner to do with Kmart?
Other place.
No, another place. Well, but I, I think what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is that I understand the intent that we want to take the meeting off the table with Levin Management about this specific issue, going before the planning board about residential stuff. That is, that is the intent. That is, that is the intent, the zoning change, that is the intent. But what I'm trying to make sure that we are not, that we're, what I'm trying to make sure is that while that is our intent, the impact of the motion doesn't have rippling effects on things that we may need to do in other places. So if we're saying that we can't talk to Levin about the Kmart property, I think what Councilman Wright was trying to say, are we then, and I, and I get that you probably are disagree, are we then saying that we are excluding any conversation and you cannot have the same, in theory, access or engagement with council members as any other property owner, not developer, that does business in this town?
Specific to this property?
Specific to the, and I, that's what I just wanna make sure.
Right, it's not, it's not broad brush, which is what I thought he was originally saying.
I just, and, and I apologize, I made you all go on that journey with me, but I just wanted to make sure.
But that is what the motion is, it is my, it was, it is my general opinion that it shouldn't happen for other properties, but that is not what the motion is.
For other properties.
Thank you. All right, so is there, does anyone wanna present an amendment, an amendment to this motion?
I'm fine with your, your motion.
Mayor, I'd like to propose an amendment. If we are going to vote on this as, as it's presented, I would say add a sentence or something, attorney can propose, that we ask developer to present their plan in a public forum here, as part of this amendment.
In addition to the.
In addition to, if we are going to.
In addition to the informal.
I don't know that you need a resolution for that, Mr., all you need to do is tell me to do that. That's a whole lot different than a resolution. If you wanna have the developer make a presentation at a township council meeting, all you need to do is tell me that.
So I can make a motion on that?
We got a motion on the table.
After, after this?
Don't cloud it, just tell me to do it.
All right, okay.
Any other discussion? Is everyone clear on the motion? So a no means, let me get this right, a no means no meeting? No.
Yes means no meeting.
Yes means no meeting.
No means meeting.
Okay, yes means no meeting, no means a meeting.
No means no.
And I wonder why government's complicated. All right, so.
Only because we make it so.
Yes means, yes means I do not wanna have a meeting. All right, everyone understand that, yes means no meeting. Okay? Madam Kirk?
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt? Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Councilwoman Houdin?
Yes.
Thank you. That was easy.
Yeah.
Councilman Wright, you, your turn for public, for council comments.
So can I?
Oh, wait, what?
I'd like to make another motion.
I think there's, there's.
Okay.
Still in council comment. Will we come to you? I'm exhausted. Councilman Wright?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This just might get me fired. But for the last year and a half, I've suffered a beat up, a beat down, I've heard people talk about the fourth ward, man, I am sick and tired of it. And we're not gonna do that anymore. I've sat here and heard the fourth ward, African Americans are so poor it's ridiculous, African Americans are so poor they live in hovels, African Americans are so poor, basically they're stupid. Now, Carl, why would you say that? I mean, it doesn't make sense. Well, let's tick off the reasons why. Housing. Some of the members that've come up to, to speak are members of the Hamilton Business District Association, which is in charge of the construction or reconstruction of Hamilton Street under the leadership of the Executive Director Vincent Dominic. Now, those apartments that were built, those commercial on the bottom and housing on top apartments, I don't remember anyone, anyone screaming at a developer to build low income housing on those buildings. I don't remember anyone going to the zoning board or planning board saying affordable low income housing. Why? They would have to come before the council and ask for money from our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Is that right, Mr. Vaughan? No, he's over there talking. That's basically how it works. So if they didn't come to us, then the Hamilton Street Business District never screwed them on that, didn't ask them, didn't ask them for it. And the people went on and built market rate affordable housing. So don't be disingenuous when you come before the council, take your finger and say, that man over there needs to listen because we need low income housing. Ain't gonna happen. Because if you then squeeze them, it ain't gonna happen. Now, if you're an astute individual, I'm a member of the redevelopment association, excuse me, the redevelopment agency in Franklin Township. I live in the redevelopment area of Franklin Township, right across the street. Now, what they did do, RPM, who's the developer, the first building they put up was low income housing, and also voucher housing, if you don't know what I'm talking about, Section Eight, however the new term is. And they built that housing project. So if the residents of Franklin Township were so poor in need of housing, they could apply to RPM. Now, who went into that building? There are residents from Newark, New Brunswick, South Brunswick, Somerville, West Orange, they're in that building. Now, if they're in that building, how did they find out that that building was available for housing? And we didn't? Do you mean the town, the residents of Franklin Township are just that stupid that they didn't know in the backyard, there was a housing project, an apartment building of low income housing that they didn't know? Well, how did everybody else know? And we didn't? I don't understand that, where did they go? Did they miss the microphone? Did they miss the planning board, the zoning board? What happened? Well, I don't know, but I was there. I was in the room with RPM and that's what they did. Now, on a side note, all the buildings that they put up, I have always hollered, and this is no secret, for green space. I love, it never will turn down a piece of green for the kids to play on. So just a side note. But I lived there, right across the street, there's an apartment building, right next door to going to build townhouses, right down the next block, they've cleared off some land for rental property. Across the street to my left, they're buying the property to put up another housing complex with commercial, which is key. On Hamilton, excuse me, on 27 and Franklin Boulevard, you have to have commercial on the bottom. So I, I would tell you to go drive by, you'll see that every spot is used except for one which First Baptist Church just vacated within the last six months or so, that's the only building that's, that's vacated there. Next on my list, jobs. Everyone comes in and asks for jobs. I'm an activist. For the African American community, we need jobs, job, job, jobs. Well, let's look at jobs. Gotta sit up here, seat is low. Amazon came to town. Tell everybody Amazon came to town, go on up there and get a job, they got jobs. Eighteen dollar an hour jobs, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two dollars an hour jobs. Yeah, it's a warehouse. Yeah, it's the distribution center. Yeah, it's on the other side of Franklin Township. Remember that. Other side of Franklin Township. Now, yes, Councilman Rahm at large, we get the RV, Barrington Valley to come and set up a job training center, and you do culinary arts, you, you do footballing, you do educational programs, you do construction, you do all those jobs. But here's the kicker, that construction job is in Caldwell. That construction job that you have to go to is in South Brunswick. That construction job you wanna go to is in Newark. That construction job you wanna go to is somewhere around here, wherever, but you need a car to get there. That culinary job, you need a car to get there. How you gonna get there? Hmm, Carl, you need a car to get there. So if you need a car to get there, and you have all the training in the world, what are you gonna do? What are you gonna do? You gonna take a Uber? What are you gonna do? Okay, you gonna take the bus, you gonna take the train, you gonna take something to get there. But if it don't go in that neighborhood, it's called pedal pushing. I know all about that. Now, taking those jobs does a very beautiful thing. It's called tuition reimbursement. Councilman Rahm, you could correct me on that if you want to. Tuition reimbursement, which means that just like me, you go to work at UPS from nine until three o'clock in the morning, you go home, you go to sleep, and then you get up and go to school. Wow! Tuition reimbursement, that's a damn good thing. Okay? So let's not say there's no jobs. Councilman Rahm just said we're gonna bring some education to you, gotta find a spot, the man is ready. But that's what we're gonna do for that. So don't come with a charade and beat me up when it ain't gonna happen. People say, well, we need a downtown. Well, Franklin Township is not set up for a downtown. Where you go, you will not find a downtown, what you will find are script malls with all kind of businesses in the script mall. We are not New Brunswick where we're gonna put barriers up and have all these eateries lined up, ain't gonna happen. We are not Somerville where you're gonna go to all these individual shops up and down the street, ain't gonna happen. We don't have big boxes. Amort aside, we do not have big boxes. So, you know, there's no anchor anywhere, so how you gonna get the stores in here? Stop and shop, yeah, well, that's an anchor, people come in on that number. But do not ever.
Everyone needs to, he hit it. Sixty-one, Aaron Judge, he hit it, there you go, move on.
Didn't wanna jump in on that one, I'm sorry. So let's be again clear, let's not be disingenuous. There's no downtown and ain't gonna happen on Hamilton Street. Ain't gonna happen. We're gonna get a couple stores, but never a big box. And by big box, I mean, there's a Tropicana food supermarket. And if you wanna call that a big box, well, there it is. Further down, you have Family Dollar. You wanna call that a big box, well, there it is. Some frustrated about that, and again, people come here and ask for it. And by the way, the reason I wasn't in here, stupid migraine, I was sitting outside in the dark, and then finally I figured I could come in here and I couldn't, so I had to sit over there in a corner, had to take my glasses off and I can't see without them, basically, so that's the reason why. But I, I took some very good notes. So I, I, I don't want people to come and say things are backwards in the fourth ward, because my father-in-law lived here, my wife was born and raised here, they went to Franklin High School here, which was the old middle, which is the new middle school. I raised my three children here. Yes, I could walk to the neighborhood liquor store, there's nothing wrong with that, there are liquor stores all over town. Okay. There was a church on the corner, it's not there anymore, and I think RVC was in the building on Franklin Boulevard and Hamilton Street. And the reason why they had to move was the building was not fixable. They left. Done deal. That's, you know, that's basically what I, oh, one more thing. Where was everybody when the housing project was being built on Hamilton Street? I don't remember anybody coming down here and getting kicked off the microphone because you're a councilman and you were advocating for the people that lived on your street. I got kicked off the microphone because I was a councilman and I was advocating for my residents because the sun was not going to shine on their backyard and they got the solar panels. That the building was too close to their house, so that window that they looked out of, you can't see anything but a wall for the building. I advocated for families that when the apartments were being built, the damn dumpster was right next door to their house separated by a fence. Where was everybody when this was going down? I don't remember anybody jumping up besides me, what was up with that? But you come back here and you disingenuous, you tell people out there on the street, this is what's going on, and it ain't happening. But if you don't hear it, sometimes you'll just believe it. You can't put a banner over Hamilton Street, we tried, our executive director will clear you up on the, maybe the township manager, whenever he comes in, will chime in and say, just ain't gonna happen. But where was everybody when that was being done? If you didn't come to the zoning board, the planning board, like I did, if you didn't get kicked off the microphone like I did because you're a councilman, sorry about that. Now, on to something that someone else brought up to me on the street, it's called curbs and sidewalks. I wrote this down, I knew about it, but I couldn't bring it up in the back of the head, couldn't bring it up. So I went back to the house and I looked at my notes, and I said, from way back when, and I said, I know the answer now. But I went to the big guy down at the end of the dais and I said, Bob, I'm fuzzy on this, but I believe it went this way. Are you ready for this? You can get a sidewalk, and that's what I advocated for, sidewalks. So everybody could walk to school on a sidewalk, and to adults, you know, running up and down, you're not in the street, on a sidewalk. Now, this is where it gets tricky, so you gotta follow me now. If there were not storm, water, drainage at either end of the curb and or in the middle, it means that the infrastructure was. it means that the infrastructure was not there in order for us to build a sidewalk and put a curb. Because if you did that, where would the water go? It would puddle up at the ends of the side, uh, of the curbs and go nowhere. If it happened on the other side of the street, it would create huge puddle right there. Now, if you had drainage on both sides of the street, but didn't have a curb or a sidewalk, the infrastructure was there for you to put the curb along with the sidewalk. You had to have a stormwater drain in order to put a curb. Now, you're saying, Carl, and the township manager backed me up on this because I live at 139, my son lives at 139 Fuller Street. Right next door to my house was a fire hydrant. Right next door to that was a stormwater drain catch. There was no curb there, there was zero. Why? Because where that was, it was a paper street. Carl, what's a paper street? They never paved it. It just sat there, grass on top of it and everything, because they didn't need the street. So, the infrastructure was there so you could put a curb. So, when R P M built the apartment building across the street from me, put a curb on my house, the water would run into the drain and would disappear. Stormwater catch. Mr. Barnlock, is, is that pretty much it?
I, I believe you've covered that and then some.
Thank you very much. So, that's how that stormwater system worked. That's how the curbs work. But yes, everybody got a sidewalk. According to the program that was worked out with the Board of Ed and our township manager who was then, uh, a traffic cop here in Franklin Township. That's how it was devised before I got here, and that's the plan I ran with. That seems like it as far as I'm concerned. Uh, if anybody else want to come in and throw some slings and arrows of outrageous fortune, I believe that is, come on down and I'm ready for you. Thank you and have a good evening.
I got the part about migraine.
I'm sorry, I'm confused, are we on the council?
Council comments. Your excuse for being confused.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So, um, last couple of weeks, there were a number of committee meetings, including the Community Foundation, um, meetings, as well as, um, Public Works meeting. I missed the planning board meeting last time because I had a conflict. And also, interestingly, the Historic Preservation, um, meeting took place. Um, I learned a few things there. Uh, one of the, uh, structures on Route 27, Block 46, Lot 11, 12, and 13, uh, was demolished without any permit unbeknownst to the township. But I think we found that later and it turns out, you know, it's a historic location. We directed them to, um, do some archaeological survey and research and it turns out that they found, uh, artifacts from the, the original Somerset courthouse. So, um, the owner has now been directed to just do the demolition, not disturb anything else until, uh, further, uh, investigation and the studies could be done, uh, through ground penetrating radar or something similar to that, to figure out if there are more historical artifacts and other, other things underground. So, that was an interesting meeting that, um, I attended and I think people would be interested to know that. Other than that, there was a, um, bike lane audit walk on, uh, September 15th on Schoolhouse Road organized by Ride Wise, um, the Township, uh, Traffic Department officers, as well as staff from there, uh, when, uh, did that walk audit. Um, and I think they're gonna send us a, uh, a list of recommendations for implementing that. Uh, that's all I had, but continuing with the, uh, other subject that we, um, we discussed, I think I, I would like to make a, uh, motion to, uh, direct the township manager to, uh, organize a meeting where it could be part of this meeting or a special meeting to bring the constituent, um, Levin Management to present to the whole council of, uh, what their plans are. If it is different from the 200-unit development.
So, I am told that if he makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Might, might I suggest we delay that until we see the October 12th presentation? That might be sufficient.
Yeah, I would, I would like to make the amendment today.
I, I think there's not enough time to organize that anyway.
So, after that, well, when's our next?
Um, your next meeting is on the 11th of October. And then the following one would be 14 days later, I believe, on.
What is the motion?
So, we can make that decision on the 25th if the meeting on the 12th with the planning board was not.
You're not on the microphone, Mr. Mayor.
So, we could, we could, I suggest that we wait till October 25th. And if we, if someone does not feel that the October 12th presentations of the planning board was sufficient, then we could entertain that. That's my suggestion to you. But there's a motion and a second unless you withdraw the motion or continue with motion.
I think the motion should go through and if we don't want the meeting, we can call it off.
Well, I, and so I'll let you make your motion and then someone will second and then I'll make my.
It's motion and second.
Okay, so my comment on that is that the motion calls for something other than what is being proposed to the planning board. I, I, with, with, so, and this is why we have meetings with developers. Other than what is proposed could be many, many, could be interpreted many, many different ways, number one. And number two, um, a tremendous amount of money is spent in engineering design even at the conceptual level. So, without having any idea on what that, other than what is currently proposed, I think that that's maybe an unfair burden on the owner of Levin Management. And so, that's my comment.
I meant other than the 200 unit.
And I'm saying, that's what I'm saying as well. You're saying something other than what is currently was the Board of Adjustment application and is now going to be discussed at the planning board as an informal presentation. You're saying other than that, and what I'm saying is, is that it costs a considerable amount of money for a developer to design something, even in the concept, uh, manner. And without having any idea or direction of what, what this township council might be interested in seeing, I don't know how I give direction to a developer to do that.
It be appropriate to potentially, Councilman Embarrasson, to withdraw this motion, have them come before the planning board. We all view the planning board, um, either the day of or on tape. And then subsequent meeting, which would be the one, the second meeting in October, and I think this is what the mayor was saying. And then we could, you could revisit that motion. If you feel that what they discussed at the planning board wasn't sufficient, you can challenge them to come back with something else. But I think maybe this motion is premature until we see what they bring to the planning board.
We'll, we'll be better informed after they go to.
We'd be better informed.
And, and might I make just one more suggestion? That perhaps instead of asking them to come here after the planning board and make a presentation of a concept plan, perhaps you have them come here as a discussion item and a discussion with them as to what, what their, what their position is as far as the redevelopment of the shopping center that have, and you have an opportunity to make suggestions to them as opposed to them putting something new in front of you that has yet to be seen.
So, you are asking, you are saying.
Let you, let them come here and have you tell them what your impression was of the planning board meeting and what your input is as how it relates to the redevelopment of the shopping center. Rather than having them come up with some random idea that might again be something that you have no interest in seeing.
I would suggest this be a separate meeting.
Probably.
So that council, uh, council, so that the public would also have the opportunity to tell them what they think would be best.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
This could take, this could take hours.
No, not could, will. I mean, hell, we just spent hours on figuring out how to do a two-second resolution. Um, so, let's call it like we see it, Mayor. It needs to be a special meeting. You also need to have the, um, interest of the applicant. So, have your planning board presentation, review the planning board presentation, then develop, uh, questions or ideas that you would want them to incorporate into their redevelopment of the shopping center and have a meeting with them to get public input and give your input to them as well. That would be my suggestion.
All right, so as such, I would withdraw that motion and we'll revisit that on October 25th.
Yes.
25th.
We'll revisit it on the 25th? We set them up?
We will re.
After the, after the planning board meeting. You'll, you'll have this discussion as to whether you want to have a special meeting.
And then decide what we're doing. We're not planning anything for the 25th.
No.
Well, as a discussion item.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I don't need the second person to agree? Okay, so, okay, motion is withdrawn.
That's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Oni, Oni Chaka.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. A few days ago or weeks, the Nigerian Institute of Bankers, they had their national convention in Franklin, actually demonstrated. Okay, I just said, uh, the Nigerian Institute of Bankers, a well-respected, um, organization from Africa and Nigeria, they had their national convention in, uh, in Franklin, which actually demonstrated our acceptance and, uh, our diversity in the city. So, they were happy and, uh, they really enjoyed their stay. Another thing I have to say is, uh, I look, I walked through my world. I discovered that most of the roads in my world are now tarred. Those that are not upgraded, uh, which is a very, which is a good improvement. So, I use this opportunity to thank the, the board department for job done. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pruitt.
Thank you, Mayor. It almost seemed kind of silly to talk about, kind of, meetings. Um, but, um, I, I do want to just say, you know, I, I want to publicly acknowledge folks on this dais and appreciate their support as I've been navigating some family health. I appreciate your patience and your grace with that and the fact that I kind of had to take a step back and focus on taking care of my family and, you know, mental health when you're dealing with sick health issues. So, I, I just want to publicly acknowledge all the support and your grace. So, thank you. But, uh, and to the public, for anyone who knew and wished support, I appreciate you. To council business, I want to say that I was able to participate in a senior advisory meeting. There were two things that I just wanted to bring, um, to the body for further discussion, and I guess in the, in the relevant form, it needs to be discussed. The seniors would like the COVID regulations reviewed for them. Uh, they would like, um, them to be reviewed specifically, um, any vaccination requirement. They do understand that the county, um, still has vaccination requirements. Um, but I did say that I would bring it up, um, for us to find full of and have any conversations in the appropriate places. They also said that they really appreciated the mini council meeting that I think, Mayor, you took and you had, uh, Police Director Mayweather, um, join them. They would love to have that opportunity again, um, but they did really appreciate that. So, that was senior advisory. You know, I think we talked a lot about Kmart. I think, uh, you know, I obviously expressed, um, myself on that. And, you know, definitely hear you and I appreciate everyone coming back and I appreciate the, the concerns that are being expressed and, you know, and I, and I think that there is a necessity to have some sort of, sorry, uh, township manager, but some sort of, um, I don't want to say town hall, I don't want to, uh, some sort of informational session, whatever method that is, where the, we, we present the master plan, we explain it, and we explain the role of the different entities in the moving along of any proposal. Because I think that's really important, that people understand how the planning board works versus where the zoning board works and where the council works. So, if, um, I would like to make a motion that we come up with an informational session or sessions about that. Because I think that to people's points about transparency, it's really important for them to understand, you know, where we all have a role. So, it isn't this confusing process where they feel like they're getting bounced from one place to another. Is that something that we could?
So, rather than a motion, does, does this sound good to everybody here that we have?
Thanks, Mayor, that's, that's usually how we conduct business and suddenly we become.
Right.
There's no motion, but is that something that?
Does, does everybody think that's a good idea?
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
That's a great idea.
Well, everyone else was making motions, I was feeling left out.
It's a lot easier not to, trust me, trust me.
But I, I would, I, you know, in hearing that, in hearing this, the amount of, I don't want to say complaint, sounds angst about the planning board and the way that they're doing business. Um, I think it's important that we go over top to bottom about how this process works. And, you know, we're really honest and transparent about if it is breaking down in certain places and if not working the way that it ought to be. But I think it's really important for folks to be able to advocate to understand fully how the process is supposed to work. Um, so I would say that, um, you know, we did talk about the Kmart, uh, thing and we made the motion. Um, you know, I think when you go back and look at, you know, when we made that action, as far as, you know, if you're wondering where people stand, when we made that action, in the motion, like, so that's where I am on, on, um, on that property. So, I do want to say, you know, that, that has been my position and my posture and, and it continues to be. But I guess, I, I think when I was trying to separate, you know, could we move to a culture where perhaps we're having these conversations? It's coming from a place of, and I think that gentleman said it in the back, that we're not hiding behind or that we're, we're giving the appearance that we're hiding behind boards. I, I, I would like to, to feel like I'm, I'm actually governing and if something goes wrong and I had a hand in it, because I was purposely having a hand in it and it goes wrong, I want someone to be like, you did that wrong, versus having stuff happen at us. Um, I don't want that to be the case. So, you know, and that's, that's all I'm kind of advocating is that I, I would like us to be more proactive, um, instead of being on the defense. Um, as much as we can within the framework of the, the township government that we have. Um, I want to acknowledge that, but I just, I guess that's. I want to acknowledge that, but I just, I guess that's kind of my closing statement on the events that unfolded earlier, is that I just, I agree, I think we could be doing more things in how we get to that place. And it's going to take time, it won't be overnight, but, you know, I just want us to be more proactive. So, thank you. We can close council comments, because I think I'm the last one.
So, I will take a small opportunity to double dip. People have been talking about the traffic that these warehouses will bring, concerns about trucks disregarding the law and continuing down Schoolhouse to Western Canal. This is not written in stone, but the manager and I have had begun discussions about how we could put up a network of cameras to monitor. You would not be able to give tickets off these cameras, but still, if we see trucks keep going down there and we have a network of cameras, we might see which warehouse they're coming from and be able to go to the warehouse owners and say, "This has to stop." So it's just a way to monitor. Again, this is a concept, it's written on paper, not stone, but in some thoughts that this might go forward.
I'm beyond thoughts, but yeah. You might only have it written on paper, but I think I have it at least etched on stone, so we'll move forward on that.
Okay.
Some of the other things related to that, are you done, Mayor?
Yeah, so then it's, so we had a discussion and you've taken it further. Thank you.
Yeah, I have.
Okay, great.
I started the process already.
Okay.
Budget's not that far off.
Off to you.
All right, so taking that one step further, one of the, some of the other things that we have done related to some of those issues about truck traffic traveling on roads that are not intended for them, I had an opportunity to have a discussion with Mr. Healy and Darren Mazzi from CME, our contract engineer, about what I have always perceived as a lack of directional signs in that particular part of town and telling, you know, truck drivers where to go and when to turn and things like that, as opposed to traveling on roads that they're not intended to be on. The other thing we learned, and we had always, I guess I had always assumed that this existed, I just didn't have, didn't do enough research. So both he and I did some research on what exactly, so logistics and truck routing is a very big part of moving goods across this country. And there is a tremendous amount of money spent by trucking companies on getting trucks from point A to B in the shortest distance and using the least amount of fuel and obviously also exposing their drivers to routes that won't get them summonses or reach locations that have low bridge heights or weight limits or things like that. And in fact, what we learned is that as standalone units, there's really two manufacturers who manufacture GPS units for truck drivers that take into account all of those things like bridge heights and road weight restrictions. But beyond that, there are a number of software providers that integrate with the onboard systems that modern trucks have for routing and what have you. And those also utilize mapping software that takes into account those things. So we are going to be notifying all of those manufacturers of our network of weight restricted roads so that we can ensure that they're included in their software packages that are put out to the trucking industry. And so, you know, companies like Amazon, that's how they make their money besides us clicking on the computer and ordering this stuff, is getting it from point A to point B in the most economical way that they can. And part of that encompasses things like weight restricted roads and bridge heights and what have, and bridge weight limits as well. So that process has started, as has the design for the network of directional signs, getting vehicles to our industrial area along Cotton Tail Lane and the industrial portion of Schoolhouse and Randolph, and getting them back to the interstate highway without traveling through neighborhoods where those trucks are not appropriate. So that part is in the works. So moving on to some other things now. I am not going to belabor this. You know, Mr. Tibbs had some things to say. The Township of Franklin was held up by the state court as the model municipality as it related to affordable housing. So this township has done what was required of them and well beyond that, as far as our affordable housing obligations in the state of New Jersey. And, you know, when you are held up as the example to other municipalities, I think that shows that the elected officials have done their job in relation to affordable housing. So that, I just, I will just say that and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Township Manager, for backing up that program.
You got it.
Thank you.
Actually, in the last election, we were criticized by our opponents because we went too far with affordable housing.
So, speaking of housing and homeowners, there's a gentleman here in the audience and I once again will applaud him for his patience in wading through what seems like an eternity to get to a point where he gets an answer for a question that he has. He was here last meeting and now I will give him the answer to his other question. The program previously called the Homestead Rebates in the state of New Jersey has been replaced with the Anchor Property Tax Relief Program, Anchor standing for Affordable New Jersey Communities for Homeowners and Renters. That program will provide, we'll call them rebates, refunds, whatever, for homeowners with incomes of $150,000 or less, and the date was October of 2019, that is the standard right now for this year's refunds. If you had an income of $150,000 or less and owned your home October of 2019, you will receive a $1,500 check from the state of New Jersey. If you are a homeowner with an income between $150,000 and $250,000, you will receive $1,000. And if you were a renter with an income of $150,000 or less, you will receive $450. The State Division of Taxation has indicated that all people who fall into those categories will receive a letter from the State Department of Taxation no later than the first week of October. So that might be why you didn't get your letter yet, is because there are still letters being mailed out. But if you did not get a letter and you want to make application, you have until December 30th to do so. State Division of Taxation website, it's prominent right on the homepage for the State Division of Taxation. You got the anchor one, you just didn't get the solar one, okay. So that, and the process online, as I've been told, is very simple and straightforward. It takes about 10, 15 minutes to be done with it and you're in and they'll mail you the check when the Treasury starts cutting checks. There you go. So that, and Mayor, at this point, I think I'm going to cut it right there and call it a day.
God bless you.
So Mayor, I just have a question on something Vern Lockner mentioned. I think you also mentioned about having cameras installed for traffic safety concerns. One, I'm pro cameras installed, because I think we have heard X amount of concerns and challenges, and every time I go to these meetings with the residents, that's the first thing that comes up, is the Dunkin' Donuts corner, et cetera, right, the congestion there. Just my questions around, when this discussion occurred, I was not part of it, so was there a discussion that's happening?
No, you weren't part of it because it was had with members of my staff.
Okay, that's what I just...
So ordinarily, I wouldn't, unless we're having a special meeting that we're not going to have now, I ordinarily don't mix that staff meetings with elected official meetings.
Absolutely, just wanted clarity.
Yeah, this came about just, the manager and I talk a lot about various things, what we can do about them, and I actually came up with the idea, why not make, if B9 goes in, make them put up some cameras so that we could, that the police could monitor so that we could see what's going on? And he one-upped me and said, "Well, we'll just put in the cameras." And then he one-upped me again and said, "Hey, we could put in a network of cameras."
Right, so what I did was I spoke with the IT department and I spoke with the police department, and I think that I have maybe some understanding of the area myself, that I don't really need to have too much consultation. The idea being, one, rather than require an applicant to put cameras in, that then we would have to rely on them to be able to provide us the video feed, we put our own cameras in and then we can monitor them as we see fit and as needed. And rather than just look at the intersection of Schoolhouse Road and Metlers Road where that warehouse would be located if it gets approved, that you look at the entire network in that area, which is something that I have thought for a long time would be a good idea, so that you could monitor it for not only traffic-related issues, but any type of issues. You know, I was in a meeting of, that was called, you know, organized by Councilman Wright last week, and it was a Public Safety Committee meeting, and I didn't talk much to this topic, but someone complained about drag racing. Is there drag racing? Well, so, I mean, drag racing has taken place in some form or another on roads like Randolph Road for as long as I have worked here and sometime before that, before I didn't work here but did drive, people have been racing cars on Randolph Road. It's a long, straight road, so that's what people will do. And these pop-up events, which have become very popular with younger people for a variety of reasons, you may have seen, there was a fatality in Wildwood this past weekend on a pop-up car show, kid doing a burnout in the street, loses control, runs into a golf cart on the side of the road and kills two people. You know, these pop-up things happen all the time. If you monitor those areas on cameras, they're far less likely to happen because word will be out pretty quickly that the police department has cameras in the area, so it's a deterrent to that type of activity, but it also assists in police investigations of a wide variety. I mean, you know, a tractor trailer that gets stolen from a warehouse parking lot, right? Well, now you have cameras that can identify at what time, which direction and all those things. So that's where my brain went when I started to work with staff to decide where we could put these, where it would be most effective. And the cost of cameras has come down considerably, you know, in the last 10 years, since, you know, 10 years ago when we first started to look at these things, it was $25,000, $30,000 apiece, now it's a couple thousand dollars apiece, so we begin to look at being able to expand that. There you have it.
Thank you, and just another thing, when are we planning on rolling this out?
Like I said, we have a budget coming up. None of this was budgeted, this is a discussion now, and you'll hear about it again in budget hearings, right?
Okay.
Yeah, yep, that'll be when, that'll be the next time we probably talk about it in earnest.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We are now on to item number nine. Council discussion items, there are none. Item 10, approval of the minutes. I present the following minutes to Township Council for their approval. Work session, regular meeting, September 13th, and executive session, September 13th. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion, any corrections? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrassen.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni-Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt.
Upstee.
Councilwoman Houdine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Item number 11, the warrants. Time to pay the bills in the amount of $4,031,977.48 on September 28th are presented to the Township Council for payment. Move, do we have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Anyone want to pull an item? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrassen.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni-Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella. Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Public hearing and adoption of ordinance is on second reading. First readings are to announce to the public that we are going to consider a new ordinance and second readings are where we decide to pass it or not. The second reading is ordinance on 4380-22 in ordinance of the Township of Franklin, Somerset County, amending chapter 46 of the municipal code to reflect limitations on the accrual of vacation time pursuant to NJSA 489-10.3 and is presented to Township Council for adoption. Public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
I'm moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, we're open to the public on this item only. This is just getting our books in order with the state law about vacation time and how much you can accrue. Anyone wishing to speak?
Seeing no one come forward, Mayor, I move to close.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor of closing public portion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, public session is closed. Do we have a motion on the item?
Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion on the item? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrassen.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni-Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella. Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Ordinance 4381-22, ordinance and ordinance of the Township of Franklin, Somerset County, amending the chapter 46 of the municipal code to reflect changes in sick leave vacation accumulation at retirement policies presented for public hearing and final adoption, the public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion? I'm sorry, motion? All in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
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 Go through my brain. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, we're open to the public on this item only.
I have to introduce myself again. Shirley Tallman, 57, Tallman Lane, Canal Walk. And I don't want to make a big deal of it, but I guess, where do we find the meat of this? Where do we find what the change is exactly?
The ordinance is over there on the counter.
Okay, then evidently I missed that.
Those are online.
Okay, thank you, all right.
Yeah, I mean, it's, so what it does is it corrects something that the state comptroller's office found that our ordinance wasn't in keeping with the law that had been amended whenever this was amended, I think 2007, so we have to make the correction to the ordinance to be in compliance with the statute.
How out of compliance were we, Mr. Vern Lockner, do you know?
How out of compliance?
How far out of compliance?
To be perfectly honest, I don't recall exactly what the accruals were, but the truth is, what this pertains to is primarily payments at retirement, and there were no people who reaped a benefit during that time of out of compliance because no one would have been eligible to retire.
That's good to know.
Because to retire, you have to have 25 years in a pension, and the law was passed in 2007, and 2007 is not 25 years ago.
That's good to know, that's good to know, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
It's a long one. It's a long one.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to, a motion? Do I have a motion to close public session?
I'm moved. Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Do we have a motion on the item?
Second.
And seconded, any discussion on the item? Madam Clerk, once again.
Councilman Embarrassen.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni-Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella. Councilman Wright.
Yes.
We are now on to ordinance's first reading. Ordinance 4382-22, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin, County of Somerset, New Jersey, more particularly chapter 222. County of Somerset, New Jersey, more particularly chapter 226, Vehicles and Traffic, section 22634, mid-block walk, mid-block crosswalks on Rutgers Boulevard. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, publication in accordance with law, public hearing and final adoption at the Township Council meeting to be held on October 11th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in council chambers. Do we have a motion on the item?
Move.
Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion on the item? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yep.
Councilman Oni-Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Onto the consent agenda. Items A through N is listed on consent agenda.
Councilman Wright, sorry.
Yes, yes. You don't love me today?
I'm punchy.
Consent agenda, the items A through N is listed on consent agenda. A portion of this meeting are presented to Township Council for adoption. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion, anyone like to pull an item? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni-Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
No resolutions to be voted on separately. All business, anyone have a nomination for board committee commissions, vacancies? Here none. There is no executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Tomorrow is the 32nd anniversary of me meeting my wife. I love you, Lori. Meeting is adjourned. Be well, Franklin.